Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may require a request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. However, no action shall be taken as it is not agendized. Do I have anybody that would like to speak during public communication? Anybody? All right, I'm going to close. We are now on item 3, Public Matters. Item A, Notice of Public Hearing, Puswax, and Approving Resolution Adopting the Little Lake Basin Valley Groundwater Management Plan in Conformance with the Water Code 10750 at AB 3030, Stats 1992, as required by Proposition 1, Funding for Groundwater Project. I hereby adjutie Andrea.
Hi, Andrea Trincatos Slater, project manager for the city of Willits. I'm presenting a recommendation to adopt the Little Lake groundwater management plan. The city has been working with Laco Associates to prepare the plan, which is being required to receive a $550,000 grant from Proposition 1 for improvements to the city's groundwater infrastructure. The grant will pay for a 3,600-foot upgrade to the groundwater mainline. And the team from Laco Associates that's been working on the plan is here tonight to lead the public hearing. But before I hand it over to them, we have an addition we'd like to propose to the groundwater management plan. I'll read the section we'd like to add as a preamble to the plan. The purpose of adding this section is to just further clarify the plan's purpose. And the section, if it's okay, I can just read the section now?
Go ahead, Andrea.
Okay. The groundwater management plan is not proposed for the purpose of the city assuming control over groundwater in the Little Lake Valley groundwater basin. If the city council adopts a groundwater management plan, only the portion of the basin within the city's limits would be subject to the groundwater management plan. Areas of the basin outside the city's limits are not subject to the groundwater management plan, and the city lacks authority to adopt a plan for those portions of the basin. Nothing in the groundwater management plan may be construed as conditioning, limiting, or suspending groundwater extraction by any groundwater user within the basin. The city also recognizes that if it should seek to revise the groundwater management plan in the future, then the city would have to undertake the same public process to develop and adopt the revised plan that it undertook for the current groundwater management plan. The city recognizes that if the city becomes involved in coordinated management of groundwater in the basin in the future, then coordination with and participation by basin stakeholders and groundwater users, including agricultural interests, would be necessary. However, no coordinated management of the basin groundwater is proposed or adopted as part of this groundwater management plan.
There was a, I believe there was a very slight correction. Instead of saying city limits, it's within the city's jurisdiction because it does include city-owned land outside the city limits. And I think that just changing that couple places where it says city limits to city jurisdiction is what was intended there.
Yes, this is Stephanie. That is correct. Councilmember Strong.
Yes, thank you for correcting me on that. We will make that change. And if it's okay with that, I would like to hand it over to Rod Wilburn, the contract city engineer for the city of Willits, and Laco planner Rebecca Dolsky, and economic development specialist Jordan Blau, and they'll be leading the public hearing.
Okay, before we hand it over to them, I just want to recognize that I believe Sabrina Rodriguez has arrived in the room. So go ahead, Rod, and Blau.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. Good evening, everybody. Andrea covered everything very well there and added the preamble. I really don't have anything additional for clarification at this point. I think we can go right to the PowerPoint presentation that walks us through the process and gives an overview of the plan. And Jordan Blau is going to present, work through this presentation for us.
Thank you, Rod.
Bear with me, I'm trying to get it open.
Excellent, thank you. So as Rod said, we have a brief presentation here to kind of discuss the groundwater management plan and some of the background that went into it. We'll be, you know, we'll be obviously discussing this afterwards, so we'll roll through the presentation, then open up, you know, for comments or anything else that sort of thing. So as we've stated, the purpose of this hearing is to review and consider adoption of the groundwater management plan for the Little Lake Valley groundwater basin. And actually, we can move to the next slide, please. So little discussion here about the purposes of the plan. This is a voluntary, non-regulatory plan that's under the Groundwater Management Act, which we'd like to distinguish from the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, SIGMA, which you may have heard of. So the groundwater management act and this groundwater management plan are a far lower bar to clear, and the reason for that is the Little Lake Valley basin has been determined by the Department of Water Resources to be a very low priority basin through their ranking methodology in terms of the stresses on groundwater in the basin with the data we have now. So the only basins currently that are subject to SIGMA are basins that have been designated medium or higher priority by the Department of Water Resources. As I said, that's not the case here, so this groundwater management plan is not under SIGMA, it's under the Groundwater Management Act, and it is a less robust document than a sustainable groundwater management plan. As discussed by Andrea, there's no authority or inherent authority that comes with this plan. It is a planning document solely. Any actions that are spurred by it or anything that is considered in the future would be considered its own project and subject to, you know, any public process there. The plan itself provides some general guidelines for understanding and managing groundwater resources in the basin, looking at historical data and what we know now, identifying potential data gaps and areas where we could develop a better understanding, and proposing, you know, maybe some ideas for projects or monitoring concepts that could help fill in those data gaps and improve understanding in the future. And then another component of this plan that I think is very critical is that by adopting it, it allows the city to continue to be eligible for grant funding through the Integrated Regional Water Management Program administered by the Department of Water Resources for any groundwater-related project. We can move on to the next slide, please. So a little bit of background of how we got to where we are today. So in 2019, the city of Willits was awarded approximately half a million dollars in Proposition 1 grant funding through, again, the Integrated Regional Water Management Program administered by the Department of Water Resources for a well improvement project. As I mentioned, in order to access those integrated regional water management funds for any project related to groundwater, there must be a management plan in place. And in order to continue to qualify for the grant that's already been awarded, the groundwater management plan must be adopted within one year of the grant award, and that grant award is made on September 6, 2019, excuse me. So that puts our timeline at September 6, 2020. And early on in this process, as part of the groundwater management process defined by the statute, the city council formally approved a resolution noticing its intent to prepare a groundwater management plan, which got our work started and led us to the following steps in that process. So we can move to the next slide here, please. So again, to emphasize, I think Andrea mentioned this, that the plan area is limited to areas within the city of Willits jurisdictional authority, which is city limits and any city-owned properties outside of the city limits. The plan area does not include any areas of the basin that are not owned or within city, owned by the city or within city limits, though the plan does have to look at those areas as all the groundwater is interconnected. But there's no plan authority beyond that jurisdiction. Next slide, please. So this might be a little hard to see in the go-to meeting format. This is in the plan itself, of course, but this is just a visual representation there of the city limits and the city-owned properties overlaid on the groundwater basin itself. So the city limits and city properties are that dark gray shading, while the light green shading is the basin as a whole. And that's quite a bit easier to look at in the plan. It would be our recommendation if you want to get a closer look at that one. And we can move on to the next slide. So the adoption of, or the process of developing and adopting a groundwater management plan is defined by statute that were referenced in the initiation of this public hearing. And there's a variety of public communication activities that go along with that, including these public hearings. There have been several, multiple public workshops. We put out a public opinion survey for which we received six responses to gather some additional information if folks were willing to provide it. And the plan itself and the process was also publicized through press releases, the development of an email list of any interested parties who wanted to be notified of any developments in the plan, the city website, and the city's social media platforms. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the first public hearing where the council here adopted the intent to draft the plan was on December 11, 2019, and we are currently in the second public hearing today on August 26. And in addition to that, so those public hearings are required by the statute. In addition to get some more information, we also have public workshops on February 13th and February 20th, early on in the process, to get some feedback from the community, and on August 5, 2020, after we had a draft plan developed, to receive feedback on the plan itself. Slide, please. So if you've reviewed the plan, you'll see there's some recommendations in there. There's a variety of topics we have to cover as defined by the statute, many of which are not really a concern in this basin. You know, I would say the two kind of key recommendations that we've identified here at this point is to expand monitoring of groundwater in the basin. There's some that happens through the Department of Water Resources, but I believe there's only a handful of wells in that program right now. And, you know, any expanded monitoring would yield a much more complete understanding of the basin and the subsurface conditions. And that type of recommendation would likely need some additional funding and cooperative effort with different entities as well, interested well owners and yielding that data, things like that. And the other recommendation of note was to just continue exploring conjunctive use operations, which the city has already begun with the groundwater project that was mentioned in order to just make the city's water source more resilient. Next slide, please. And that brings us to the end of the PowerPoint here, and we can open it up to questions and discussion.
I'll open it up to council members before I open it up to the public. So are there any council members that would like to ask a question? Okay. Hearing done, I think at this point I will open up the public hearing and take comment from the public. Would anybody from the public like to speak?
Yeah, this is John Alameda. I went to two of the meetings for the public, one in February and one in early August. And I think it's a good idea that you've done this study. My concern was when you spend $70,000 on a meeting or on a project, then there must be a bigger item behind there as far as a goal. And during the questioning of different employees of the plan, I asked about why they were doing this, and one of the reasons was they have an algae plume in the reservoirs that the city owns, and they want to draw 1.2 million gallons per day in August and September, which is the dry part of the year. Later on, it was corrected to about 800,000 gallons per day, which concerns me because I have a well in Willits Valley, and without that water, I've got a problem. And I know that you're within the city limits or city-owned properties, but the aquifer doesn't understand that jurisdiction. When the aquifer goes down, it goes down for everybody, and that means all of us that live in the valley, and there's a lot of us out here, we have no other source of water. So I'm very concerned on how you go ahead on this, and I hope it's done very cautiously so nobody is hurt in this situation. Thank you.
John, would anybody else like to speak? So state your name. I see Mr. Near, are you moving? No, but I don't hear anything. Kathy, is there anything you could do for him?
I've unmuted him. I unfortunately can't do anymore on my end.
Um.
He may have to call in. Chris, can you call in?
Chris, can you call in by phone? I think it's on your side. Speedy says one minute. As well, Chris calls us. Chris?
I'm Mr. Perry.
Chris, I think there's some bandwidth issues on your side. Might try calling in by phone.
Can you hear me now?
You sound like a robot voice on my end.
Well, I'll just say thumbs up. I can have a way to do it. I'll just give you a thumbs up.
Chris, if you turn off your video, your bandwidth may work.
Just say thumbs up.
It is an important subject. I'm going to give Chris a few minutes to call in.
Start to leave. Yes.
While we're waiting for Chris to get audio settled, can I add one, a question? This is Mayor.
Yeah, I can't, I can't seem to manipulate anything here.
Jerry, you need to unmute.
Miss, uh.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll call in by telephone. Kathy, go ahead, you had a question?
Yes, I just wanted to know whether the fact that we have water trucks coming to the Ball Field area and filling up, and apparently it's a fairly large quantity, I wonder if that's covered in this plan and whether, if it isn't, it should be acknowledged that there's some, a fair amount of water, untreated water, not potable water, that's being used by wherever the water trucks take it. Seems like that should at least be in our awareness. It may be a concern towards the end of the summer, you know, when we are in drought years.
So as things stand right now, the plan doesn't discuss that explicitly, though I, I'm not familiar with the amounts there, and it's definitely something that I can do.
I can't do anything. I'll call in.
Okay. So that isn't addressed explicitly in the plan right now, Councilmember Strong. It is something that we can consider, I think, in an update. So I'll also clarify that with the information we have right now, there's not a precise water balance in the plan where we estimate the amount of groundwater being extracted versus the amount that's recharging. And I think for that sort of analysis, that information would be really critical. But as of right now, that's not discussed in the plan.
I think, I think it is an important data point, though, for future data collection to be considered. One of the things that was pointed out was there just, there isn't enough, a lot of current information available, and I think it would, it would be something to be included with further analysis, analysis. I'm sure this plan, I have an echo.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Kathy, you should mute Chris.
I'm going to, thank you.
I can't turn off my computer.
Is that you, Chris?
Yes, I'm on now.
Go ahead.
Thanks for your indulgence. I, I don't know why my computer isn't working tonight. I can't even turn it off. I just want to say that with the preamble, I'm satisfied with your moving forward tonight. The, obviously, you did the plan because you were required to by the Water Resources, and it was, and it was, it's a great informational document, and it'll, I'm sure it'll be the foundation for much studies in the future. And for this particular basin, it probably is not ever, we're never probably going to need to have basin regulation because the basin is so large and it's not anywhere near being overdrafted. In fact, I think this plan documents that. And so the idea that we're going to have to regulate basin withdrawals like they have to do in the Central Valley is probably pretty far-fetched. And I just wanted to make certain that this document isn't considered to be something that once adopted forecloses comment if and when the city, a future city council, decide to move forward with some other type of regulation. So I appreciate your consideration of the preamble. It satisfies me.
Thank you, Chris. So at this point, I'm going to open it up to anybody else from the public that would like to speak. Okay. Going, going, gone. I'm going to take it back up to the council and see if anybody else in the council wants to ask some questions. If not, I would entertain none. Well, I guess before that, I close the public hearing. So I guess I'm closing the public hearing and I'm bringing it back up to the council.
Jerry, it looked like Farm Bureau was turning their mic on. Perhaps they had something to say?
No? Yes, thank you.
Okay, I didn't catch it. Go ahead.
I was clicking on multiple devices, so trying to get there. So thank you, Devin Jones, Annapina County Farm Bureau, and I also want to appreciate the clarification on the jurisdictional authority and where this potential study plan is going. You know, in dealing with the SIGMA intricacies in Ukiah, it's not an easy task to get through, and it's not a cheap task to overcome. So there is concern about, you know, where this was going and potentially in that realm. But I think that there has been clarifications in terms of the intent, and I do agree that if there is any alteration to this plan in the future, that there needs to be significant public outreach again to work within the community that may be impacted within the basin and adjoining properties to the city. So thank you for that. Appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everybody that spoke. And again, I'm going to ask if anybody else would like to speak, council members, again, close the public hearing.
I had one other comment. I already mentioned it to Andrea Monday, I guess.
I was going to, I was asking if anybody else from the public before.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Anybody else from the public? Okay, I don't want to miss anybody, so at this point, I am closing the public hearing, bringing it back up to council, and recognizing councilmembers strong.
Okay, thank you. I had already mentioned this, Andrea, but the plan graphics the maps don't show the bypass, and it's a pretty significant landmark in here, so when you have the state highways marked, it should also include the bypass. I don't know if you're going to republish or not, but when you do, it should add the bypass. Thank you.
Would anybody else from the council like to speak? You look like you had something.
This is Sabrina.
Sabrina, go ahead.
I just wanted to sympathize with Naria. I got on five minutes late because I was having some technical difficulties that kept kicking me off, but that's it for me. No other questions.
Yeah, I think with all the kids out there zooming and doing whatever and all everybody else streaming right now, it's a big hit on internet availability, so that's why I'm trying to give everybody an opportunity to speak. Right, at this point, if nobody else from the council wants to say anything else, then at this point, I would entertain a motion on our resolution.
I would like to say something.
Go ahead.
This is Councilwoman Connie. I just wanted to thank Andrea for your excellent work on this groundwater management plan, and thank you, Laco, for making it clear and understandable. I appreciate the efforts to address the community concerns. I do share Mr. Alameda's concerns about drafting groundwater, but I am reassured by staff on Laco comments that we are a low-priority basin, meaning that it's very unlikely that we will overdraft. And I appreciate that this document does bring more observation and data to the public to make sure that we don't, that we don't do what we all are afraid of, and that we don't see subsidence or anything like that in our valley. So I think this is a good step. I look forward to learning more about water in our community. Thank you, everyone.
All right. And now, council members, do I have a motion?
This is Sabrina, I'll make a motion.
I'll second. I second it, Mr. Larry.
Okay, I'll take Larry's, since I couldn't tell who else seconded. So motion by Sabrina and seconded by Larry. Any further discussion? All right, call for the vote, Kathy.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes, and again, I want to thank staff, the folks that spoke today, and wrote us the letters. I appreciate everybody gets involved, it's really important. All right, now we are moving on to item 3B, Notice of Public Hearing. To discuss, oh, excuse me? Somebody's speaking. Excuse me, get your lines, please. All right. Discuss both future applications for funding under the CARES Community Development Block Grant, CDBG-CV program, and consider adoption of resolution authorizing submission of an application in response to the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program Coronavirus Response Round 1 Notice of Funding Availability. We have Dusty here. Jim?
Yeah, hi, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Dusty Dubley, your community development director. Mayor, do I sound okay on the phone?
Sound okay. Go ahead.
All right, so a couple things that we have in. Jim, you've got your hand raised.
Can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
So no, no, I was just trying to block out the sun.
Okay, very good. Two matters in front of the council tonight. One is to talk about future projects that we might want to seek, community development block grant or CCG funding for in the future, as well as to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing submission of an application in response to the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program Coronavirus Response Round 1 Notice of Funding Availability. Let me just start off by saying I'm actually quite giddy to be talking to you about this program tonight. The Community Development Block Grant Program is, I keep pausing because I'm getting feedback here. authorizing submission of an application in response to the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program Coronavirus Response Round One Notice of Funding Availability. Let me just start off by saying I'm actually quite giddy to be talking to you about this program tonight. The Community Development Block Grant Program is, is an, I keep pausing because I'm getting feedback here.
Folks, if you can mute your line, please do. That's where we're getting feedback.
Okay, so just to carry on here, I was just going to describe the CDBG program as it's an intricate program, a lot of interesting things that you can seek funding for, but there's also a lot of federal and state regulations surrounding it. So, so again, a lot of good things that can come from CDBG funds, but it's a complicated program, to put it mildly. Eligible activities that can be paid for with the state CDBG funds must meet one or more of the three national objectives, and this is listed in the agenda summary. They have to either benefit low-income households or persons, eliminate slums and blight, and we can probably think of one thing right off the bat when we talk about that, or meeting an urgent community development need. So it sort of has this very broad net as to what types of activities can, can be funded under the CDBG program. On, on, earlier this year, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, AHCD, announced the availability of new federal funds called the CDBG Coronavirus Response Round One, or CDBG-CV One, and this was, this was done through a Notice of Funding Availability. This is an unusual, unique opportunity amongst the CDBG world that came about in response to COVID-19 pandemic. It's a formula-based, non-competitive grant series that set aside up to $77,266 in funding for our city. I will note that they're possibly made for round two of funding in the near future as well. So staff is seeking council authorization to request approval, to seek these funds for the purpose of implementing a public service program to assist at least 160 low- and moderate-income city households with water utility bill payments. As of earlier this week, a total of 113 accounts within the city limits are past due and represent a total of approximately $41,000 in payments past due. So the idea is, in order to assist these low- and moderate household-income residents, the city will provide up to three months' financial assistance not to exceed $400 per household. The program would pay for, again, up to $400, but no more than three months of total bills. The payments would be made internally, accounted for, and the cumulative reimbursement request will be sent to AHCD for payment on a, typically on a monthly basis. Up to $13,135 or 17% of the funds may be used to reimburse staff time required to administrate the program. You know, and it's certainly important for the city to note that, you know, this project would have no impact on the general fund itself. You know, we've been looking, the, the city well has not had recent experience of managing the CDBG programs. However, we, and I would say the only reason we're in front of you today with this opportunity is due to the assistance of the surrounding jurisdictions, including Ukiah, Fort Bragg, and Mendocino County. They have more in-depth experience with CDBG programs. They have long-time relationships with CDB consultants that are assisting them with the program application, and this is a big reason as to why, you know, your staff is, is comfortable going after the CDBG funds for this. And I'll add that, from speaking with the other jurisdictions, as well as the AHCD staff and CDBG consultants, this appears to be the most ideal opportunity for the city to dip our toes into the CDBG waters without causing great risk to the city. I, I want to note that our, our all-star community development specialist, Jim Robbins, is on the line and, and may wish to add some further dialogue to what I've been able to present, and certainly is on the line to answer any questions that the council may have. And I believe we also have a well-respected CDB consultant, Mr. Jeff Lucas, on the line as well, helping us put together our application, and he's also available to answer any questions that the council may have. And Mayor, that's, that's just what I wanted to share with the council in introduction to this item tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Would anybody from the council like to ask, Dusty, any questions? Suprina, go ahead.
Dusty, for the public's purposes, can you explain how complex will the application be for applying for these funds?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Again, relative to other CDB applications, this is, this has been relatively streamlined, and the city of Fort Bragg was actually nice enough to share their application with us, whereby they're seeking funds for their jurisdiction for the same purposes. And we also have the benefit of Mr. Jeff Lucas, a CDB consultant that's helping us prepare the application with, with mainly assistance from myself and Jim. So I believe we, with the council's support tonight, we would expect to have an application into AHCD by early, early next week, possibly Monday.
Any other council members like to ask some question? All right, you're muted, go ahead.
I just had a question about the actual resolution regarding this item. On section two of the resolution, it says the city hereby approves the use of program income in an amount not to exceed $0.
All right, so, okay. Now, Jim, do you mind answering that question?
No, yeah, absolutely, certainly. So the city has some program income from past due, or rather, past what we sort of consider fallow CDB program from several decades ago, and what this section two indicates is there's no plan to use that program income from those previous CDBG programs for this, for this program.
Okay, okay.
Any other council member? Very much. Okay. Question, Dusty, is there any plans to expand this beyond just the water building? I mean, also offer sewer? I know that's, factoring with taxes and stuff. Just curious.
Well, I'm not quite, you know, the, there definitely is a desire among staff to look at additional opportunities, and this, this, this initial application presents an opportunity to feel it out a little bit. I really meant what I said in my introductory comments, that it's an intricate program that you can quickly run foul of the numerous federal and state regulations, and I think as we look to expand the CDBG program, which is certainly a, you know, an admirable goal and something that we need to continue looking into, we need to be very careful as to how we move forward. And what's happening, I hope, as part of this initial application is, it's going to allow the city to further establish relationships with AHCD, with other jurisdictions, certainly with CDBG consultants, because nobody does anything at the local level without this expert assistance. It's, it's that cumbersome of a program. It's not enough to just have an intelligent, hard-working staff. You really need somebody that has, you know, multiple years of experience navigating that. So what we would be doing is looking for opportunities to, you know, further our program, and I don't know what, what project that necessarily would be, but, but we certainly would want to tread forward carefully. And, and, Mr. Lucas, are you on the phone now? Do you want to maybe add, add something to my, to what I just said there? Okay, I don't, he must not be on the phone, so that's kind of my roundabout answer, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm just more curious, anything else? I know this is a big thing there. It's quite often true. So at this point, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and look for anybody from the public that would like to speak. So a caller on, do you want to, please state your name? Hello? Would anybody from the public like to speak? If so, state your name. We're not missing anybody. One last call. Caller number eight, are you, if you're trying to call, maybe you could hang up and call back. If you're set. That's why we need to expand our broadband in this county. Do I have anybody from the public? Anybody from the public? Can't wait for COVID to be over, folks. All right, at this point, I am closing the public hearing and bringing it back up, council. Have any other questions? Go ahead, Suprina, you ready?
Dusty, I have a question. In the agenda summary report towards the end, let's see, before you get to the paragraph that starts with recommended actions, the prior paragraph, it talks about the additional, any additional costs incurred to the city in administering the program are eligible to be reimbursed by the Water Enterprise Fund, which is good, but I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if there are controls in place to ensure that any additional costs aren't significant to the Enterprise Fund, and I'm, I'm also wondering about the allotted, I kind of did the math of how much per applicant it would cost to process and manage each application. I'm wondering if city staff, I'm assuming it's put forward, if the city staff will have enough time to perform these duties, or whether it would be advantageous of us to have somebody outside of the city employment manage this, this process.
Again, excellent, excellent question, Councilmember Rodriguez. What, what you're, what's being communicated through that sentence is, in part, the fact that your staff does not have experience with, with administering funds through the CDBG program. There is the potential, but I would call it low, based on our conversations with Fort Bragg and, and a consultant that was introduced to us by the county, and also works with Fort Bragg, Mr. Lucas, who I hope to be on the phone today, but anyways, I, I just don't know the answer to that. What, what they have told us is that this is a relatively easy program to, to, to manage. What, what we in part envision is that we would have a notification process to let folks know about the opportunity to have a, at least a portion, up to $400 of their water bill paid for through these funds. We understand that there's a self-certification process for determining eligible households by income, and that that's not a cumbersome part of the, the management process. We recognize that we need to account for the money coming in, or the money that is being utilized to assist our low- and moderate-income residences, and that that has a financial tracking obligation to it. But again, as mentioned earlier in the agenda summary, it's the fact that we have the, you know, assistance from the folks over in Fort Bragg, from the city of Ukiah, that we have a consultant that has experience and can help us navigate it, that we do have the confidence that we will be able to manage this project mainly in-house, reimburse our own staff for it, and, and not be dipping into our Water Enterprise Fund, or at least not in any, you know, relatively significant way. But, but again, this is why we've tried to pick the easiest, or one of the easiest projects that we could identify under this very unique opportunity where the process has been streamlined as its intended to be spread down to combat the COVID-19 pandemic. So from this staff member's perspective, this really represents the, as ideal of a situation as we could ever hope to see as far as our dipping our toes in and trying this out. And, and no, I don't, I don't believe that it's a great risk to the city, and if, if I thought so, and this is certainly what prevented us from bringing something forward in the past, but in this situation, I, you know, we would recommend that the council allow us to make an application.
Thank you, Dusty. That was helpful. I, I'm excited about the grant as well. I just want to make sure that our water ratepayers aren't subsidizing, and ensure that should this go outside of what our expectations are in regards to this grant, that you'll bring it back to us, either from city manager informational or an agenda item, so that we're aware of how this is moving along, if it doesn't stay on course.
Of course, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
I'd like to move to accept... Depper?
Seven seconds? All right. And in further discussion, Kathy, call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie? Council...
Yes.
Rodriguez? Strong? Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're getting a weird delay from you, Kathy.
Yeah, I hear that. I'm sorry.
All right. We are item four. We had no ordinances to enact, so now we are on item five. Set calendar, and Kathy asked that I pull the July 21 city council minutes. We're not done yet.
Correct.
All right. And so, item A would be the city council minutes of June 10th, 8, 20, sorry, 29th, and August 12th. Item B would be resolution ratifying extended the additional 30 days, the council's declaration and order of existence of a local emergency as a result of the novel coronavirus, COVID-19, pursuant to resolution 2020-10. I have a motion.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
As, as you just checked that. That's like, okay, and you had a comment from council members, anybody want to comment from the public? Okay, so Kathy?
Councilmember Connie.
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, and I want to say these were the most detailed, uh, dating minutes I've seen.
I'm sorry.
No, it was really good, it was good Kathy, I think that, uh, in putting more information in, uh, I felt like I could really understand what was happening at the moment, so I appreciated it.
Thank you. Councilmember Strong?
Uh, yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Red, uh, Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes, alright. So now we are item six, informational reports, and again, we're not going to go with those, but they're in, in fact, it's, uh, holding a special activity reports, July, and business license activity in July. So now commissions, agencies and authorities, item seven. Have, we're going to recess in the city council and went through the, is our role as the planning commission. And so for item 7A, notice of public hearing, city has planning commission, discussion and possible action on application for general plan amendment, uh, number GPA 19-01 and rezone number 19-01 for the Willets Unified School District. This is a dusty thing, so take it away.
Yes, thank you Mayor Dusty, July Community Development Director. Uh, the council may have noticed that you had quite a bit of information for this item. Uh, in your council packet, you should have your, your Agenda Summary, the staff report with the recommended project conditions of approval, uh, the initial study mitigated negative declaration, uh, that was prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, including a transportation impact study. Uh, staff, uh, received one letter from the public on the matter, and you have that letter from Mr. Burton included in your packet. We also received a comment letter from Caltrans regarding the draft initial study that was prepared, along with, uh, a response to Caltrans letter from our traffic engineers, and both of those letters are also in your council packet. Um, and just for, uh, for the sake for other folks that are listening in, um, the, uh, staff PowerPoint presentation, as well as, uh, all these documents I just mentioned, are available on the city's community development page, uh, simply by, uh, clicking on the planning documents tab. So, uh, if you're in a situation where you can only participate by phone, well, I guess if you don't have a computer, you can't, well, anyway. Uh, all the information is on the planning documents tab, uh, as, as mentioned in the public notice for the project. Uh, and then, uh, just real quickly, Mayor, uh, we also have the applicants consultants on the phone call with you, Olivia and Crystal, whom work for the, uh, M Group, uh, and are the main authors of the initial study, uh, mitigated NICDEC. And I believe we also have Mr. Steve Leinberg on the phone, who works for W Trans and prepared the, uh, transportation impact study. Um, and I would invite any of those folks to, um, provide clarity to anything that, that I speak to tonight or offer additional information that would be helpful to the council, and, and certainly they're available to, to answer any questions that the council and public may have tonight. Um, so the, uh, the applicant, uh, is the Willets Unified School District, and they're seeking approval of both a general plan amendment and a rezone of an approximate 5.6 acre portion of their approximate 8.19 acre property. Um, the, the project site, um, that, that portion of the overall, overall school property, subject to the project request, is designated, uh, industrial general under the general plan and has a base zoning designation of heavy industrial. The project proposes to amend the general plan designation to residential medium density and rezone the properties to the corresponding residential medium density or R2 base zone designation. And, and Kathy, can you go on to the next slide?
Give me one second, Dusty. There you go.
This, this is the housing element, which, um, so we got the wrong one up right now, Kathy.
The wrong what, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm seeing the housing element PowerPoint, and we want to get the, um, the one for the school rezone here. But, uh, speaking of the housing element, because the, the council supported the update to the housing element, made that investment, uh, that allows it to be eligible for the CDBG funds that you just authorized us to seek, so. And Kathy, I'm, I'm making sure that I sent you the right thing here, so let me see if I did.
I don't believe I have a PowerPoint, I'm sorry for this item. That's the one you sent me earlier. Bear with us, you guys.
I'm going to send you another one here, Kathy, hold on.
Thank you.
Okay Kathy, you should be getting that soon, and that's, that's my fault, everybody, I apologize.
No worries. Almost there.
Yeah, it always seems like it's a lot, some more time going on when you have a bunch of people waiting for you.
There we go.
Okay, thank you Kathy.
Sure.
Um, so I, yeah, as you can see, that we have a, a slide up showing you the, the general location, uh, of the project site in relation to the city limits there. Um, go ahead and go on to the next slide, please Kathy. Okay, so, uh, what, what this slide is showing is that portion of the school property that's subject to the rezone, the 5.68 acres I mentioned earlier, uh, the, the project site is relatively flat and consists mainly of an open field that they main, maintain regularly by the school. There, there is a small intermainstream that runs through the northeast portion of the project site, would have the ability to convey water, uh, across a portion of the site before making its way to, to Bechtel Creek. Uh, but it's a fairly ordinary, uh, piece of land. Um, the, the applicant stated purpose of, of amending the general plan land use and base zone to a, to a residential, residential designation is, is to create the opportunity for a future housing project, uh, such as a, as a multifamily housing development. Um, although no physical development is proposed as part of the general plan amendment and rezone request, the, the environmental analysis, um, including the traffic, uh, transportation impact study, uh, completed in accordance with CEQA, evaluated the potential byright multifamily residential development that could occur to rezone. So again, although there's no physical development being proposed out of this rezone, what we need to evaluate is, is the, is sort of the, the biggest and most impactful project that could be represented, uh, should the council approve the, the rezone, uh, and, and apply the R2 designation to the property. And, and what that is, is, is a multifamily residential project. Uh, Kathy, I think you can go to the next slide there. Um, so, uh, how we envision the conceptual residential development is, we simply took, uh, the acreage subject to the, to the rezone, recognized that there's a, a maximum density of one dwelling unit for 3,000 square feet, uh, and, uh, and came up with a determination that the project site could theoretically accommodate up to 112, 111 multifamily dwelling units, such as apartment units. The, the way we got there was, uh, that there's 82 permitted, uh, houses that are allowed under the base zoning designation density, uh, as well as a 20, 29 additional units if the project was granted a density bonus. Um, there's also an opportunity to develop single-family homes on the lot, although as noted in the slide, that would require further discretionary approval by the council of a, of a future major subdivision. And again, uh, you can get the, potentially get the density bonus allowed under state law and, and included in our city code, uh, for single-family home development, and with that density bonus, uh, the, the site could theoretically support 55 single-family homes as well. Um, uh, next slide, please. Uh, the, the property is currently zoned, uh, heavy industrial, uh, and what you see on the slide here is all those uses that are currently permitted in our heavy industrial zoning. Uh, child daycare service is something that the state required us to, to add, that was something that we just came up with on our own. Uh, certainly activities like automotive repair, um, are allowed, and, and a, a number of, of uses that can fall under general industrial and then the intermediate industrial use types. Um, so heavy industrial is, is really allowed those uses that you would expect to find and be reserved for a heavy industrial zoning. Next slide, please. So the, the applicant again is requesting to rezone the property to the R2 medium density, uh, zoning. And, and what the slide is showing is those uses that would be permitted in an R2 zoning. Uh, they are all, uh, related to housing. So again, uh, single-family homes, duplexes, triplex, apartment units, fourplexes, um, then, um, you know, things like supportive housing and transitional housing, this is again something that was added to our, uh, to amended, amended the city code to be consistent with state law, uh, same with, uh, farmworker housing and, and a residential care home. Uh, so, uh, again, uh, recognizing the permitted uses, the, uh, the highest and, and most impactful use would likely be, uh, a, uh, multifamily residential development, which falls under the group residential use type. Uh, and again, based on density, could potentially allow up to 111 units, and so, uh, that evaluation, again, was, was based on that, that potential development. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, what this slide is showing is, is the, uh, certainly identifies the, the project area outlined in red, uh, and it shows the existing general plan designation, uh, as well as, um, the general, the surrounding, uh, general plan designations in the area. Uh, next slide. And now what we're looking at is, is, is the same thing, but with the corresponding base zoning designations. And, um, you can see that, um, the, the city has, um, created a number of situations where we allow for, uh, residential uses right up against heavy industrial zone land. Um, and this is a situation that has existed, uh, within the city for some time. Uh, and you can see, uh, the current property is, is surrounded by, uh, both, uh, residential zonings, as well as heavy industrial zonings, and then the blue representing the public facility zoning designation, uh, where the, the Bechtel Grove School is at. Uh, next slide, please. Can you put it on the next slide there, Kathy, please?
Uh, I've got land use.
Thank you. Um, so a, a couple key issues that were, yeah, I think that's the right one. No, you're good, thank you Kathy. Um, so there's a, a couple key issues that were identified and discussed in the initial staff report that I'd like to, uh, speak to a little bit more. The, the first being, um, the future residential uses compatibility with the surrounding land use and, um, and zoning, the surrounding zoning and, and land use activities. Um, so as the council's aware, uh, the surrounding lands do include, uh, the Bluster Lane Elementary School, as well as the Bechtel Grove Middle, uh, School to the east. Uh, you have the single-family residence to the south and east, the railroad corridor to the north, where the, the scum train operates. Uh, and then you also have an active lumberyard on industrial land directly adjacent to the site to the west. Um, the lumber operation has a longstanding history at that location and has the potential to cause adverse impacts to any future residential development that may, maybe realized as a result of, of the project approval tonight. Um, adverse impacts could include, um, the noise, uh, dust, uh, odors, um, which, which are recognized elements of industrial type operations, in, including, you know, the, the existing adjacent lumber operation. Um, general plan policy 1.220, and again, this, this is within the, the staff report and, and the initial study. Calls for minimizing potential land use conflicts by defining compatible groups of activities, assigning appropriate land use designations, and requiring development standards and buffers offset adverse project impacts on surrounding properties. So in taking guidance from that, um, staff, uh, is recommending, uh, condition number 29, uh, to minimize potential land use conflicts or, or compatibility issues, and is recommending a 100-foot buffer, uh, uh, be established between any future residential structures and the shared western property boundary, uh, with the lumber operation. And, um, it's important to clarify that although this restriction would apply to, uh, prohibiting residential structures from being built within that buffer, it, it wouldn't necessarily prohibit, um, the inclusion of access roads, pedestrian walkways, uh, landscaping and those types of improvements from being located within, within the buffer area. Um, and, uh, it's also important to note that there, uh, it does, the condition has risen, written does provide an opportunity for a future developer to potentially reduce that buffer upon, uh, implementing some additional design considerations. And, and really what I think staff would be looking for in, in looking to grant that buffer reduction would be something like an engineered sound wall. Um, I don't know that you could really get there by just doing some type of landscaping or, or even some additional construction standards. Um, it really would take something like, you know, an engineered sound wall of, you know, say eight to 10 feet, um, to, to really mitigate those potential compatibility issues and, and lend itself towards, uh, staff looking to, to support a reduced buffer. Uh, can you go to the, uh, next slide, please? So, uh, what, what this slide is intending to show is- So what this slide is attempting to show is what a 100-foot buffer or even a 200-foot buffer should the council so choose would look like for this project site. So again, currently staff is recommending a 100-foot buffer, and we would look to prohibit a residential development within that area. And then certainly you can see a 200 feet would increase that buffer but also further restrict the potential to build housing on the site. And so what you also see in that slide is that the development potential would be reduced by approximately seven to nine units with a 100-foot buffer and approximately 15 to 20 units if we were to establish a 200-foot buffer. And the council has the authority to play around with that. You can reduce it, you can make it 125 feet, whatever pleases the council. But that would be the trade-off is the reduction in housing development potential. And if you go to the next slide, please Kathy. So we talked about the idea of a buffer to try to offset potential impacts from the two different land uses. Another concern regarding the proximity of the residential units to the lumberyard in this situation is the potential for future homeowners or tenants to complain about the lumber operation even though it was in operation long before homes were ever built on the project site. So again, this is assuming that the rezone does lead to a successful housing development. And I gotta say, and you know, Mr. Burton, I believe speaks to this in his letter, and I can say that this is a legitimate pet peeve of mine as well. In my career as a planner, there's been a few occasions where I've witnessed examples where, you know, people move up here with a certain expectation and then start complaining about other land use activities that were already existed when they chose to move to this certain location. And you know, example would be, you know, somebody let's say moves up from the city, they buy a beautiful property in Redwood Valley, it's on this idyllic vineyard setting, there's a low density of housing, it's often quiet, and then they want to complain about that tractor that's out there at 4:30 in the morning spraying sulfur to maintain their vineyard. Well, you know, the vineyard was there and you choose to move in next to it, and you know, I don't know to what extent you have the ability to then complain about an activity that's expected and common to a vineyard operation. I saw this when, well, I heard about it earlier when I started working for the county where there was the subdivision that took place up in the eastern hills of Ukiah, I believe was the Visi Springs subdivision. And I know about it because I would feel complaints from homeowners that recently moved there. Well, the subdivision went in relatively close to a gun range. And again, this is a pet peeve, so I'll say me, if you choose to live near a gun range, you should not be surprised when you hear gunshots. And so again, towards that point, should the council approve the project, you know, staff is recommending Condition Number 11, which is up on the screen right now on the PowerPoint, that would require future homeowners, lesses, to receive a disclosure statement acknowledging the presence of surrounding industrial uses. And I won't read it all, but if part of it says, you know, people that purchase land may be subject to the inconvenience or discomfort arising from industrial operations. And, you know, it's very likely that the things they're complaining about are inconveniences that are typical of an industrial operation, whether it's a lumberyard or something itself. It's operating in conformance with existing laws and regulations and locally accepted customs and standards. And, you know, what can happen, or one of the concerns, and again, I think Mr. Burton outlined this in his letter, is, you know, we might be here, you know, 15 years from now, it could be a different council, it could be a different staff, it could even be that, you know, Mr. Burton has passed that land in operation on to his son or somebody else. And this whole discussion's been lost, and I would hate to see for a situation where a residential development goes in, they start complaining about the lumberyard which had a longstanding history before the residential, and then that somehow has an ill effect on that industrial operation that's otherwise operating in conformance with all the required regulations. And so what this is attempting to do is carry forward that notice and provide all future homeowners or lesses with this statement that requires them to acknowledge that you chose to live next to an area that's a mixture of residential and industrial uses, and hey, you know, noise and odor and some of these potential things may arise from time to time. And that's an aspect of choosing to live at this location. It's not unlike disclosures that you see for people that purchase houses near airports or the county, I think, has something similar for people that choose to live near land that's zoned agriculture. And this isn't unique to other jurisdictions. A lot of what I have here was based on a similar standard that's found in the city of San Francisco. So, thank you for letting me talk a little bit about that. Next slide, please. So the other key issue that I wanted to spend some time speaking with staff about is the potential increase in traffic and traffic impacts that could result should we realize a residential development on this property. I'll just note that the Transportation Impact Study actually looked at a conceptual residential project of 165 multi-family units, so significantly greater than the potential 111 units, which theoretically could be realized as a result of the project approval. And again, I think that was based on previous discussions with the applicant about potentially rezoning the property to multiple residence R3, which would have allowed for a greater density of multi-family residential units. But again, I just wanted to point out that inconsistency, but also state that the Traffic Impact Study actually evaluated a much bigger residential project than that could be realized under the proposed R2 designation. So with that, the study evaluated five key intersections that could be impacted by a potential project. I will note that the Walnut Street, State Route 20 intersection was evaluated after the initial evaluation based on comments that we received from Caltrans. The study concluded that, actually, next slide, please. The study concluded that all the intersections are expected, this is straight from the Transportation Impact Study, the study concluded that all intersection studies are expected to continue operating at the same levels of service upon the addition of potential traffic that may result in the conceptual residential development. I should note that our general plan does provide us some guidance in this situation. Policy 2.210 sets a standard of level of service D or better for local streets. So all existing intersections operate at a level D or better currently, and none of those level of services would be impacted or changed, I shouldn't say impacted, they will not change as a result of a future residential project. Go on to the next slide. So not only did the study look at both existing as well as project conditions, it went a step further and even looked at future growth scenarios whereby the city would expect to anticipate a growth over a number of future years. So even looking into the future, it was the same conclusion that the project existing conditions and future conditions would not cause a significant impact to any of the studied intersections nor reduce the level of service below a level of D. Next slide. And in case it's helpful, it's not often that we've talked about level of service in the projects presented to this council, but actually, this defines the different levels of service. As you can see, there's an A, B, C, D, E, and an F. And what our general plan guides us towards is to ensure that we're maintaining level of service intersections at D or better. Okay, next slide, please. So this is a Condition Number 33 that was identified as a result of the Transportation Impact Study, and access to the site would be from the western terminus of Walnut Street. And what this is stating is that any future development would be expected to do a stop-controlled T-intersection at that location that's consistent with city and industry standards. And also notes a minimum sightline distance of 150 feet to maintain side distance when pulling out of the access road that would serve the development. Next slide. Okay, and then these are two additional conditions that were based on some input that we received from Caltrans. I believe the council is familiar with Walnut Street where it comes out onto South Main Street, still State Route Highway 20, where we currently have a restriction on left turn due to the level of traffic and safety factors in trying to make that left turn. So the traffic engineer that was hired by the applicant and that completed the study is recommending that a couple other additional improvements that be made to further prohibit or prohibit folks from trying to make that left turn. And further, this is something that we already know, but it was again reinforced, reconfirmed by the traffic engineer in that, you know, we have a number of folks already that cross South Main Street near its intersection with Walnut Street to access the Safeway business and other businesses that are across the street. And so I believe the council is aware that we've identified the idea of establishing a enhanced pedestrian safety crosswalk at the Walnut Street, South Main Street location for the benefit and safety of pedestrians. It certainly is not identified as a requirement of this project in part that it hasn't been vetted with Caltrans to the point where we have a design that's confirmed that would be sufficient to meet Caltrans standards. But again, I enjoy the fact that they identified an improvement that our community has already identified as well. And I'll just note that staff is in active conversations with MCOC and Caltrans about putting together a design and seeking funding to complete such an improvement. Next slide, please. This is a slide, this slide is showing an exhibit that's found in our city bicycle and pedestrian specific plan. And it might be a little bit hard to see, but if you can identify Walnut Street on that map, what it's showing is identifying a Class 1 bike lane that would run through the property and connect Walnut Street with Blosser Lane. Obviously, this property doesn't go all the way through to Blosser Lane, but what we would expect as part of any future development is to have a dedicated bike and pedestrian path that could ultimately link up with Blosser Lane, but certainly could serve as a benefit to folks that might want to walk in that area and act as a potential connector to Blosser Lane in the future. So again, anytime we get these types of residential projects, we will look for them to make onsite improvements consistent with our Safe Routes to School Plan and our Bike and Pedestrian Safety Plan. I'll also note that the city had identified doing a Class 3 bike lane on Walnut Street as well as Locust Street for the benefit of pedestrians and bike riders. So just to point out that we are paying attention to those plans, they're not just sitting on the shelf, and they do get activated when we have projects that, discretionary projects that come before the council. So Mayor, that concludes staff's initial presentation for the project. Again, we also have Olivia Irvin and Crystal with the M Group who were the lead authors of the initial study. We also have our traffic engineer with W Trans, and they're available to answer any questions that the council might have as well. I believe we also have Mr. Westerberg representing the school district on with us today, and Mayor, he may want to provide some opening comments on the project as well. Thank you.
At this point, I will, Mr. Westerberg wants to comment on any of the folks' preparation of the document. Mr. Westerberg, go ahead.
Thank you. Let me first say that we are looking at selling this property, we are not going to be the developer of it at all. Our intent is very simple. I've been in meetings with the mayor and other people who are on the meeting tonight talking about housing in Willis and what a problem it is. We happen to have some ideal location right in the center of town between two schools that will help with that. 25% of my teachers are living in Ukiah because they can't find places in Willis. I think it's really important that we look at housing and an opportunity. In regards to the buffer, the 100-foot buffer is really irrelevant. We're not selling the property to somebody who's not leaving that road in place. Our intention is to have that road go along the railroad tracks and curve back at the end and come into kids' club because we're going to run school buses in there and take our school buses off Della and off Blosser Street in the morning. We have a major issue at Blosser in the morning with buses and parents and teachers and everybody. This would allow us a second entry into there. The current kids' club takes up two-thirds of that western boundary already. So all you're talking about is a small stretch that is aligned to a six-foot-high fence with a bunch of stuff piled on it. So that road's going to stay in place anyway, so the 100-foot buffer is going to be there anyway. But the issue really is, we sit next to this site all the time, and the school's not experiencing big problems from smell or noise or any of that stuff. So I'm not sure that industrial issue is an issue for anybody. Secondly, the buffer will already be there because the road's going to stay in place. And most importantly, the district isn't dying to sell this piece of property. If we happen to pass our bond issue, we may consider holding on to the property because this property is only going to do one thing for the school. It's going to bring hopefully families and places to live and some building and site funds to fix some things we can't fix. But I know for two years I've been at lots of community meetings where we talk about the lack of housing. This is a prime opportunity. You're a rock's throw from Safeway right in between two schools. There can't be a better piece of property in town to put some houses on. If it's rezoned, we wouldn't have to even do the entire space, we could parcel off. In fact, the first part that comes in from Walnut is a perfect location to have eight to 10 houses. So we're asking to rezone it so it can be used for something that will help the community. And this is not something that's going to fix all our school facility issues, but more houses and more kids certainly houses and more kids certainly help everybody. And so, we're trying to be part of this long-term solution, not a short-term issue of who wants to own the property. Our intent is to keep that road in place because it helps us with transportation. Della's an awful street to have even cars on, let alone pedestrians and buses. And Blosser in the front at 8 o'clock in the morning is pretty exciting. So, that's the intent of the school. There's no, there's no hidden agenda here. It's really quite simple. We have a piece of property we want to get to R2 so we can put it out. This is just rezoning. It has nothing to do with selling it. The district would have to surplus this property. I go through a 7-Eleven committee that looks at it and gives the board a recommendation on surplusing it. I also have to offer it to other public entities who may want it, like charter schools and so forth. So, this is just the step. This is 16 months getting to this step. And I still have more months to go to do a 7-Eleven committee and surplus it, and then even get the property appraised properly. So, this is just the beginning, but I think it moves us in the right direction.
Could we get that screen share taken off so we have seat people there? Thank you.
Sorry.
Mayor, this is Dusty. I had one more thing I'd like to share at the council that I forgot to in my initial presentation. May I?
Go ahead.
It was an additional condition that staff would like to recommend, which was that the applicant shall establish a 30-foot-wide easement from the western terminus of Walnut Street to the northern terminus of the existing turnaround located on Assessor Parcel Number 00621026 for the purpose of establishing emergency vehicle secondary access, as well as a potential opportunity to accommodate a drop-off pickup location for students. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Westerberg, do you, any of the folks that helped prepare your plan, do you want to use them, bring them, to clarify anything? If not, I was going to open up the phone.
Well, it's kind of up to them. It's a very straightforward project. We had archaeological study done, transportation study done. I've done everything that was asked by the planning commission to get to this point. And there really were no issues that were not resolvable.
First off, see if anybody from the council wants to ask any questions.
Yeah, I just had a question regarding the buffer. That area, if we did whatever number of feet, would include or could include the access road that would connect down to the Kids Club turnaround. And then also, if we did that, the number of allowed units would be reduced by that little amount of the acreage that we're, and then a future developer, if that came up, could, with the sound wall, could then reclaim some more units by doing a sound wall instead of the buffer. Is that right, Dusty?
Yes, Councilmember Strong, everything you said is correct. Any type of access road, whether the easement you described just now in the condition that Mark was also referencing, or just any general access road that would be designed as part of any future housing development, could be included within that established buffer area. And yes, certainly, by creating that buffer, it does theoretically limit the housing that could be located on the property, at least from a zoning density perspective. And right, the way the condition's written, there would be an opportunity for a future developer to reduce that buffer based on improvements such as establishing an engineered sound wall. So yes, everything, everything you stated is correct.
Let me address that. The 100-foot buffer doesn't really make any difference. There's already going to be a road there. The 200-foot buffer is kind of ridiculous. That's not necessary. The 100-foot buffer is already going to be there because there's going to be a roadway. It's already there. It's going to stay there. And 2/3 of the property already had asphalt on it from Kids Club. So, you're just talking about extending from that circle up to the north end. It's a very short distance. The 100-foot will be easy to maintain because we'll already have a road there.
Any other questions of staff or Mr. Westerberg? Any other questions of staff or Mr. Westerberg from the council? If I open up the phone.
We can hear, I can hardly hear you, Jerry. I don't know what's going on, but I can't hear Jerry.
Any other questions of the, from the council for Mr. Westerberg or staff?
There you go.
Yes.
Go ahead, Sabrina.
Okay. First question is for Dusty. Is the easement for access, the purpose of that easement, is it strictly for the school and Kids Club access, or is the easement for other purposes beyond that?
Thank you. Yeah, to clarify, and I believe you're speaking to the additional condition staff recommends there. And the purpose of the easement would be certainly to be made use of by school and also emergency vehicles such as police and fire. The beginning portion of that access road could also potentially be used to serve any future housing development as well. What is in effect is for that access road to be open to everybody for the benefit of connecting to Blosser Lane, rather that last stretch would be for the benefit of the school and emergency vehicles only. I hope that provides the clarification looking for.
I think so. As Mayor Gonzalez, my screen shows that you're talking, so it's kind of working Dusty just a little bit, but you're not talking. Kathy, can you fix that on your end? It's showing that he's talking and so it's muscling Dusty a little bit. Okay. Question number two. Is there a 100-foot buffer on any, on any other property that's adjacent to industrial property on that, on that street? Because I know that aside from the mill, there are, there are other, for example, let's see, there's the mini storage. There's other businesses that are operating on that street. Is there any 100-foot buffer for any other residential homes on there?
Uh, no, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And would this decision then consequently impact anybody who was going to do any, let's say, further down the street? What is that street on the, on the backside of Vectogrove? Along the railroad tracks? I know we have some homes closer to Main Street, and I'm wondering, should they decide, say, a home burnt down and they want to put another home up, anything of that nature, would our decision on this 100-foot buffer impact any other home development unintentionally? And then, same thing with any, the other direction on that street itself. We still have some existing homes that are sitting there. And if I remember correctly, we also had an applicant that came before council several times that had talked about building a home, wasn't it, on that street? With this, with this decision, if we decided to do the 100-foot buffer, I would imagine out of fairness, we would have to include something like that. I'm wondering if maybe it would be more appropriate to address the 100-foot buffer later when we're looking at, we're looking at a project rather than looking at land use.
Okay. So, that's a, that's a good question, Councilmember Rodriguez. And I think what you're, you're asking me is, what type of precedent are we setting for future and existing housing developments if we were to establish a 100-foot buffer for this project?
That's what he's asking. Thank you.
Of course, you're welcome. So, certainly, any existing legal housing or entitlements in place today would not be affected by this precedent of establishing a 100-foot buffer between future residential development and the existing lumber operations and heavy industrial land to the west. Anyone who has a piece of property that allows for a single-family home to be developed by right, the city would not have the authority to require any type of buffer beyond our regular property setbacks that are established and in place. The idea of sort of pushing the decision on the 100-foot buffer to a later date, say at the time of an actual multifamily housing development, could be a little bit problematic in that by rezoning the project and approving the rezon to R2, a multifamily development would then become a by-right development. And would only, could only be expected to be consistent with any applicable city standards, such as, you know, our road sidewalk requirements, utilities, drainage, as well as any, any special conditions that we place on, on this rezone application, such as a 100-foot buffer. So, you might want to look at it as, this is your opportunity to take a bite at the apple. And any, any future applications are allowed by right. You're applying city standards, but you don't have the ability to use discretion and put additional restrictions on the housing development at that point. I hope I explained that in a clear fashion, but I'm happy to try again.
You did, Dusty. I'm just thinking about like all of the other areas in town, like Windsor Mills, Fairtime Supply, and I'm thinking about just, we, making sure that we're fair. I'm a little concerned that maybe because we have one applicant that's concerned, that we may, that we may be setting a precedent for a buffer that may not be within, within our greater vision of our, of our community. So, just thinking about that. I'll let the next person talk.
Mark, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I just want to be clear that when you look at that picture and you see the circle turnaround at Kids Club, there's a road already in place. Obviously, it's a gravel road, but that's going to stay in place, and that's going to be a knot for through traffic. That's going to be for buses or obviously an easement for fire trucks. But, we're going to use that as an, as a way to bring buses in there, not to bring through traffic through the Blosser School site. So, that 100-foot buffer is irrelevant because the road's going to stay in place anyway. But, again, that's, that's my opinion on that.
Madge, do you have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah. Well, the road, or even a road up to full standards, isn't a whole 100-foot width. So, it isn't irrelevant, but I appreciate your pointing that there will still be an access road there. And that would, if we do have the 100-foot buffer, would be part of it. That would be part of the 100 feet. But I also think this is a kind of unique situation in that we're being asked to rezon something that is currently zoned industrial and turn it into medium-density residential. So, this is a point where you can look at adjoining land uses and say, obviously, if it was industrial, it would be a continuation of the same zoning that the adjacent lumberyard has. And if we're changing it to residential, there is, you know, there is some concern that having the residents, like their backyard right on an industrial is changing, you know, is changing the situation. The fact that it's a rezone from industrial to residential, I think, gives us the discretion and, and I think it's appropriate to ask for a 100-foot buffer that includes whatever roads and bike lanes and, and some landscaping that would help, you know, just provide a little bit of a buffer. And I don't think it significantly impacts the amount of residential allowed on the total properties. I think Dusty said it was something like maybe eight units that would be, eight units less than would have been allowed otherwise. So, I think, I also paced it off when I was out visiting the site, and 100 feet is, it's enough to be a little bit of a visual and maybe a little sound barrier, but it's not, you know, it's not excessive. I think 200 feet is, is excessive. So, I like Dusty's proposed condition on that personally.
Mr. Westerberg, want to respond to?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the 100-foot either. As I said, it's going to be relatively close to that anyway with the road staying in place. And let's just bear in mind, we're talking about a very short stretch of property that's already, Kids Club takes 2/3 of it. And if we were putting an industrial site there, I guarantee you would have more than one person sending you a letter. I don't envision other industries going, gee, can I put a industry here between these two schools? You know, so, the 100-foot's fine. I think we're going to be there almost regardless anyway.
All right, thank you. Any other council members want to weigh in before I open up? I just want to add one thing that I kind of agree with Madge. It sounds like Mr. Westerberg isn't opposing it. And at the same time, concerns I have, Dusty addressed, just because there's been a mill or something there since I can remember. I grew up near mills and railroad tracks, so I'm used to that, but I would pay for someone 20 years from now to move in and complain. So, that was in that concern. The other thing I wanted to kind of get out there is that I occasionally sub to the school district as a substitute teacher, and I also am on the Kids Club Board, so I kind of wanted to disclose that to everybody out there. And Jim, if that's going to be an issue when final vote is taken, please advise. At this point, I'm going to open it up. Public comment? Anybody from the public would like to comment?
Jerry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Jerry, this is Bruce Burton.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Good evening. I haven't got a set of computer to follow your presentation, so I've just been able to do it by telephone. But, I would like to address what I've heard. I don't know that we have ever, since we've, we've had zoning regulations in the city, intentionally put red backing up to heavy industrial. I mean, the southeast anti-station is about the only piece, and when that, and it's on the east side of town, the size, I mean, with the, but where we have, and we do have a number of places, you know, where 101 Redwood is, or where Windsor Mills is, or where we are. We certainly do have residential next to industrial, but every day zoning, that wasn't, that wasn't a, wasn't a planning decision made by the city. I mean, there was no, that wasn't, that was before zoning laws had any effect. And clearly, zoning is designed, the purpose of zoning is to minimize the conflicts between neighboring land uses. And it is kind of, I would imagine in Planning 1A, they, they teach you that you don't put residential next to heavy industrial. Or you can, or you don't have to, and you don't have to. If you're zoning, that, those are two logically understood to be non-compatible uses. And, and to mitigate, to attempt to mitigate it is, you know, trying, is trying to put a square peg in a round hole. The 100-foot buffer issue of... The hundred-foot buffer issue, I mean, I don't want to necessarily admit, but I've had people complain about my operation from the neighborhood in Beckelgrove School, about my operation on Franklin Street, not necessarily the noise we were making in our log yard. And I want to characterize it more as a log yard than a lumberyard. We build three-quarters of that yard with logs every year, and we have a small portion of it that we stack a little over. I think the school district has got their process inverted. I think they need to declare its surplus property in the form that it is than doing, asking for a zone change. And they're not following their procedures in determining that they have, you know, to access property. I mean, you certainly don't build a school on residential property. And I, it befuddles me how they think that they can, that they can, this process is a linear, is following a linear thought that... The other thing that concerns me, I mean, I did the math on this, and you have 5.6 acres and you throw in the hundred-foot buffer, and then you build 60-foot roads or 50, whatever, Dusty can tell me, that they're between 50 and 60 foot wide and make access to this property. I figure it's going to take about three acres of road to build the property, to access all the property. And that leads to two and a half acres, well, even if the log size is 3,000 square feet, and you do single-family residences, that would be 25 or 28, something like that. So obviously, to get to 110, you're doing multi-story, multi, you're doing apartments. You know, you're doing apartments. And so you've got a landowner that says that, well, yeah, I acknowledge that I bought this property and I'm next to heavy industrial, but then, you know, if I, I mean, he's going to have 50 tenants. And so we don't, we're not looking at trying to keep even 25 landowners happy. We're looking at 110 tenants, I guess, with two or three people or four people in a home, in an apartment. So that's, that's quite a, you know, that's quite a jump from even being a, some residential housing. It's basically building one of any number of apartments that you see in town, the ones that are on Locust Street, or the ones that are on Holly Street, or, you know, Creek Side, or whatever, the multi-story. So I think that, I appreciate, you know, a couple of the things that you're trying to do, Dusty, in addressing the issues. But when it comes to noise, dust, and odor, a hundred feet, you know, I, I don't, you know, the solid waste operation there is 800 feet for me. And there's days that I know when, I know when craft season is. Let me just put it to you that way. So there are, you know, the effects go way past 100 feet. A hundred feet doesn't take care of a backup alarm at 5:00 in the morning, if, or required to have. It doesn't take care of, you know, all of the industrial sounds that you end up making. So I'm happy to answer, you know, anything that you guys have. I stand by my letter in terms of the other information that I provided. I don't need to necessarily go over that. But I think that this is, it's going to create a conflict for us. And I've got to try and do my best to look out for my business and my employees and, you know, try and stop problems before they become problems. And this, I can't see where it's going to do anything else but create difficulties. So anyway, calling right over my thing, and thank you.
Bruce, it looks like Mr. Westerberg may have a response or a question. Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, number one is, obviously, I consult our school attorneys. So, yeah, there is a linear process to this, and that's who I get my legal advice from. And secondly is that, you know, we're the neighbors to the Bruce's industry as well. I don't want you to forget that. And so we're pretty aware of the noise and the sound and all that. And to be honest with you, it's not much of an issue, virtually is no issue. I've never heard anybody even say anything about it in five years, that there's a single noise or a problem. And his business works during the day when we're in session. So if, is there, do you put schools next to industrial? Because that's what's happened. We just dropped in cannabis cultivation, a Roxro from Beckel. Is that going to create a smell over at Beckel? Is that a good use for that property right next to the middle school? No, I didn't get involved in that because I figured it was his property and he's entitled to have what businesses he wants on it. So I'm just asking for the same.
Okay. Any other members of the public that would like to speak on this? Give me a little more. Okay, I'm going to bring it back up to the council. Madge, do you want to say anything?
Just one other question to Dusty. I don't recall right offhand, but it seems to me that the city has quite a lot of industrial zoned land available still, and a number of industrial buildings that are vacant. And I think we don't have a lot of housing opportunities at the moment. Is that, is that accurate? Or would you like to comment on that, Dusty?
I don't have a definitive answer for you off the top of my head, Madge, or Council Member Strong. Although it certainly is true that there is both underutilized and vacant industrial land, and there is underutilized and vacant residential land as well. But as far as being able to give you type of ratio off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I just don't have that information.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Go ahead.
Would it be appropriate at this time to make a motion? I can't hear you.
We can't hear Jerry.
Can't hear me? Can you hear me out?
I can't.
Okay, I guess I was too close to the mic. Any other council members want to speak on this before I call for a motion? Jim on the line, Jim Lance.
Jim Lance here, Mayor Gonzalez. So I heard your question earlier. If I understand it, you infrequently substitute teach for the school district, is that right?
That's correct. And I'm also on the Kids Club board. I just want to know whether I have a conflict.
Okay, so the bottom line is whether you have a material financial interest in the, in the, in the subject that's being voted on. Public officials are prohibited from making or participating or using their official position to influence a government decision. And an official has conflicting financial interest if it is reasonably foreseeable that the decision will have a material financial effect upon that buffer. So that's the question you need to ask yourself, is whether, is whether this decision is something that you have a material financial effect upon, upon you or your family. And if it does not, then you don't have a conflict.
I don't think the real estate decision does, but the district, I think, don't make lots of money for them.
Well, if you're uncomfortable, you can always recuse yourself and not participate in the vote if...
And I will probably...
There's a little link to do that, participated in the discussion.
Yeah, well, the question wasn't raised until just a moment ago.
I apologize because I wanted to, thought about that as I... I will...
We can't hear you again, Jerry. Jerry, you need to come back.
I will abstain from the vote. So, Jim, what's the procedure? Should Larry take over for this, or should I just call for the vote and abstain?
Leave the room before the discussion. Yes, that's correct. If you're recusing yourself, then you shouldn't participate.
Kathy, can I ask me when, only when, so I will get out of there.
If you got a conflict, myself.
I don't think so either. I mean, you're not being paid by the Boys and Girls Club, are you?
All right, Larry, you're in charge now. I'd like to make the motion.
Okay, I will accept the motion. Do I hear a second?
Well, could I clarify my motion real quick? I'd like to make a motion...
Certainly may.
Okay, to approve the rezoning with the condition, the one condition of the hundred-foot buffer.
Do I hear a second?
I'm sorry, I don't understand, Suprina. You're saying, including that, that condition and all the other conditions that Dusty presented? You said including that hundred-foot buffer. Is that what you meant?
Correct. My motion is to approve rezoning from industrial to R2 with the one condition that we have a hundred-foot buffer on there.
But there's also a whole bunch of other conditions in his staff report. Are those also in your motion? The staff report, basically, the recommendation?
What she's saying is, are you going with the recommendation of the, of the topic that's on the agenda?
Oh. Can you give me just one moment? Because there was one condition that I had asked Dusty about previously.
Vice Mayor Stransky, this is Dusty. Can I possibly assist with some clarification?
Too bad. Go ahead.
Thank you. So Councilmember Rodriguez, I believe your, your, your motion is specifically supporting Condition Number 29 of the staff report, which indicates the requirement to establish a hundred-foot buffer between residential uses and the western property line or the log yard facility. And I believe what Councilmember Strong is wanting to confirm is that along with your support of Condition Number 29, you're also recommending approval of all the conditions, all the other conditions as recommended by staff, not just Condition Number 29. And then just clarification for myself, staff also offered up an additional suggested condition related to the 35-foot wide easement. And I wondered if the motion also intended to include that additional suggested condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Dusty. That, I knew there was one additional item, and it was the easement that was, that was the question that I was trying to recall. So yes, my motion is to approve staff recommendation, noting that Condition Number 29 is in fact on the west, on the north, is that on the north side of the property, Dusty?
West, it's the west edge.
Okay, west side of that property. And my motion does not include, oh, I'm sorry, my motion is just reiterating that I'm including Dusty's suggestion of the easement for emergency access to Kids Club and the school. So yes, everything you asked for, I suppose. Thank you.
I'll second that motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, we have a motion and a second for this. Could we have a roll call?
Yes.
Are any questions from the council? Any questions from the council? Okay, Kathy, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Connie?
No.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Stransky, this is Dusty Dooley, Community Development Director, again. I just want to also point out that we included a recommended motion to adopt the environmental document, which is a mitigated negative declaration. And it may be appropriate to take motion on adopting that environmental document as well, not just simply the approval of the project with the recommended conditions. Thank you.
I'll move the approval of the additional item. Thank you.
I'll back the motion.
We have a motion and a second on this. Any other questions, the council? Yes, we have a vote?
Yes. Councilmember Connie?
No.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes, and I just wanted to note that that wasn't explicit in the agenda, that the approval of that negative dec, but I guess it was in the staff report.
Thank you. Stransky?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the mayor to come back.
And we are at Item 8? Item 8. Thank you, Larry. All right, city manager reports and recommendations?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. This is Stephanie Gerberts here, your city manager. I have just a few things. The first thing I'd like to do is to announce a couple things. First of all, I would like to thank our interim chief, Chief Greg Allen, who is spending his second-to-last day with us today. We have really appreciated and enjoyed Chief Allen's contributions to our city. When he came, it was a week before COVID hit. And he came with the expectation of doing all sorts of fun things, and then we almost immediately went into lockdown. And he has approached this as a very good sport, and we have seen some tremendous changes, and he has been an impressive part of our management team. I would like to thank him for his service to the city of Willett. He is with me. We are socially distanced appropriately in my office, and I would just like to say how much I have enjoyed him being here. And I believe that he would like...
So, all for allowing me to be your interim chief. I want to thank our great city manager, Stephanie Sierra, for bringing me on board. I am very proud of the dedicated members of Willet's Police Department. And I am equally as proud of our other city employees, my city family. They are awesome. I thank you for supporting your police department, and we protect and serve you. And lastly, I want to thank our community for your support and for your consideration and patience and kindness towards one another during this COVID-19 health crisis. I've made many friends here, and I have enjoyed my time here. I'm excited for the future of our police department and our city. Your new police chief, Alexis Blaylock, is a great leader, and I know that you'll continue to support her and our police department. Thank you for the opportunity of being here. I won't be a stranger, and the future is bright for the city of Willet.
Thank you, Phil. I'd like to now do something I'm very proud to do, and that is to introduce our new police chief. Chief Alexis Blaylock has come on board just today, and she's been shadowing Chief Allen all week and learning the ropes of the city of Willet. She comes to us with an incredibly impressive background. One of the things that Chief Allen vowed to do when he came here was to find us a great police chief. And he reached out, and he called people, and he said he wanted to set us up for the future. And one of the fine candidates he brought forward was Ms. Blaylock. And she proved to be an extraordinary candidate who flew through her boards and her tests and everything we threw at her. And after she came and toured the city, well, she still wanted to stay, so we were thrilled, and we are delighted to have her. She comes to us with over 25 years of experience as a sworn officer with the San Diego Police Department. She also has spent years at POST, which is a training organization for police officers. And she was a lieutenant after her retirement with the University of Southern California. She's had a number of very impressive special assignments when she was with the San Diego Police Department, including internal affairs and dealing with dignitaries and also with youth. She is here with me, and I believe that she would like to say a few words. And so it is my great pleasure to introduce Chief Alexis Blaylock, who was sworn in just a few minutes ago, to the city of Willet.
Thank you. To all of the council, I will be brief. I want to say that I'm just truly honored to have been selected to be your police chief here at Willet. I look forward to serving and being a part of this community. It's a beautiful town, and I already feel very welcome. I also want to take the time to thank our city manager, Euro Grant Sierra, and Chief Greg Allen for having confidence in me, the staff members who have already demonstrated sincere support, and the city council members who've taken the time to meet with me. I do look forward to meeting the remaining council members, and I just want to say I'm really happy to be here, and I intend to leave a department that offers excellent service to the city and community of Willet. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Blaylock. I also wanted to add that we are especially proud because Chief Blaylock comes to us. She's going to be the first female police chief in Mendocino County. So we have some milestones we're accomplishing here in Mendocino County. We have a lot of strong women here, as our council knows and is appreciative of, and I'm just very, very proud. So that concludes my reports and recommendations for this evening. Thank you.
And Stephanie, again, I want to join. You guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I want to join you in thanking Chief Allen for his service when he came. And I want to welcome my new chief a couple of weeks ago, so that's why I didn't participate in the meet and greet. Forward to chatting with you in the future. And at this point... I'm sorry, I guess we are due to department recommendations, and I still have the chief on board. Is there anything else you want to say? Otherwise, I'm moving to item 9A.
They're shaking their head, so I guess we're good with the police department.
All right. So how about item 9A, discussion and possible action on a resolution awarding a contract to Granite Construction Company in the amount not to exceed $592,760 for the construction of Willet's Downtown Improvement Project, project number 2020-02, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and approve construction change orders up to a cumulative total of 15% of the total contract amount.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Stephanie Gerbert Sierra. I'm coming to you as the city manager and the public works director on this item. I also have backup with, I believe, Jeremy Bronco is on the line, along with, I'm not sure if Director Trincotta was still on the line, as well as Dusty Dooley, because this item is truly a group effort. As you know, we have a downtown plan that was adopted some time ago, and it was a very, the Main Street Improvement Project was worked on with, by Dusty Dooley and the rest of our staff. We had extensive public input through online surveys and advisory groups and planning fair, and we even received an award in 2017 from the California Chapter of the American Planning Association. And so it was always planned, at least I'm told, because this actually happened before I came on board, was that soon after relinquishment of our Main Street, we would be putting up beautifying Main Street, starting with street trees and pavers. And the engineering department put out an RFP for the pavers and the trees after extensive conversations with the Revite Ed Committee in terms of what the pavers would be like and what the trees, that we wanted mature trees that would really make a real change to Main Street. Since we have had our Main Street finished, we have had to live with medians that were not the most beautiful, but we did the best we could with our shavings or last thereof while we were hopefully awaiting pavers and trees. And fortunately, when we put out the request for proposals for the pavers and the street trees, the bid did come in considerably over our estimate. And so while that was disappointing, I am happy to say that because, you know, that MCOG D1 funds are able to make up a good part of the difference, as is with the street trees, we have, most of that cost is being borne by our urban forestry grants, and that can be supplemented by our transportation fund. Therefore, none of this project, we are anticipating, will hit the general fund if you choose to fund this project. I know there's been some discussion about whether it's appropriate to use transportation funds for trees, and our city attorney, Jim Lance, did do some research on that and did opine that it was an acceptable legal use for those funds. The alternative is, we could rebid the project. However, if we were to rebid the project, this project would not be completed until next year, and we would probably be replacing pavers with stamped concrete. And sort of in the meantime, we could try some interim measures such as maybe having staff pour some concrete at some carriage stops. Another thing that has come up since relinquishment and actually since the Main Street has been complete is we have had a couple of folks who have tripped in the medians, and this has caused us some concern. I have had discussions with REMH about this and with our city attorney. So there is some sense of that we do want to do something to make these areas safer. And although this is a larger amount than we anticipated, if we do accept this contract, we would be able to complete construction this year. As you can see, it was competitively bid. We had two bidders and a fair bid, and the low bid is Granite Construction Company, with whom we have had quite good experiences with. And then we had a bidder that was quite a bit higher than that. As you can see from the bid tab, what came in pretty high, much higher than we anticipated, were the costs for the trees. I believe that a big part of this is because we had plans for nice trees. We didn't want to bring in just little saplings that didn't really have a chance. We wanted to have some really nice-sized and impressive trees for Main Street. With the price that Granite has quoted us for trees, I will tell you that they will be held to a high standard, and those trees better be darn nice for the price that they are saying that they're going to do, and I hope they are hearing me say this. If you have any questions, we have, I believe Jeremy's on the line, and I know Dusty's on the line, and certainly we would like to answer any questions that you have about this project. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Any questions from council?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm concerned about using the money that we should be using from the transportation fund, let's see, $97,471, to fund a project that's for trees, because when this tax was taxed on the citizens, I understand that it sounds like we can use it for the trees, or we can use it for the trees, but to me, it feels like a bit of deception to the public and what we thought our funds were going to be used for. I'm uncomfortable with voting in favor of this for the $97,471. I'm wondering if there are options where we could use the grant funding of the $493,000 and stay within budget. Is there anything that we could change in the project? It looks like a large portion of it is actually labor. Is that right?
So one of the tricky parts of this is that when you put out a bid for competitive bid, you can't negotiate with contractor. The bid's the bid. And it is actually an illegal practice to mess with the bid. You actually have to put the project out again in another RFP and change the scope and the facts. And if we were to do that, that would delay the project till next year. If Dusty's on the line, I would like him to respond to your suggestion that maybe we could take some more money out of the urban forestry grant.
I appreciate it. Yeah.
Okay. Dusty Dooley, so in looking at the budget for the urban forestry grant that we received, within that budget, we did receive the opportunity to plant 50 street trees within the streetscape. So for instance, the trees that we're proposing to plant on Main Street. And the money that's set aside within the grant is $2,500 per tree. So 50 trees, $2,500 per tree, $125,000 has been set aside. Certainly, staff explored the opportunity to move funds around within the grant from other categories. We understand there is a limited opportunity to do that. However, the majority of the budget has already been dedicated to the contract that we signed with the consultants to actually complete the urban forestry management plan. And the few dollars that are left are reserved for other items that we promised to complete. And so from staff perspective, you know, certainly if we were maybe $10,000 short or something, we could probably figure it out. But the difference between what we have budgeted in the grant versus what came back from the bid results is not a difference that could, that appeared that we could be made up from simply manipulating the grant dollars.
And could I have, could Jim, Jim Lance, he did actually quite a bit of research on the transportation fund and appropriate uses for the transportation fund, and perhaps he would like to say something?
Yes, hello, this is Jim Lance. So the agenda summary that we have before us has a couple of reports attached to it that discuss the benefits that trees add to Main Street. And basically, the one that I think is so significant is the studies that conclude that the shade provided by street trees cools the highway surfaces and extends the life of the asphalt. And so it seems like it is a very important component of constructing a city Main Street that you would have trees on them, because it benefits not only the motorists and the pedestrians and the bicyclists, but also the actual improvement, that extends the life of the improvement. And to not spend money on trees would seem to be not a wise practice. And then also, years ago, I think it was in Governor Schwarzenegger's term in office, he signed legislation enacting the complete street concept. And then that has been incorporated within Caltrans Highway manuals. And basically, a complete street, Dusty could give you a better definition of a complete street, but it includes having components that benefit all users of the roadway, and the roadway includes the sidewalks. And so a complete street has designs for pedestrians and bicyclists and motorists, and trees and landscaping are recognized by the state as having a beneficial impact, not only on the users, but upon the asphalt. And so trees and landscaping are an accepted, a desired component of street design by the state of California. And then a couple of days ago, I found a report doing some research from the State Controller's Office. And it determined that street trees and street landscaping services are considered to be transportation expenditures by the State Controller's Office, specifically with regard to the gas tax, the state gas tax also. The road maintenance. And so there's a March 2019 study by Betty Yee, the California State Controller, that's entitled "State of California Guidelines Relating to Gas Tax Expenditures for Cities and Counties." And granted, these guidelines are specific to the gas tax and not our local sales tax, but I think that it's illuminating. And it goes on to say that these guidelines are specific to the road maintenance or rehabilitation program. It lists all of the state-approved construction expenditures in this report. And those include landscape treatment, such as sod, shrubs, trees, irrigation, et cetera, along the street or road right-of-way. The report also has a section on maintenance that lists categories of appropriate maintenance expenditures. And it specifically states that tree trimming and watering within the street right-of-way and street replacing are appropriate and approved maintenance expenditures from gas tax revenue. So the State Controller has determined that street trees are an important component of county and city street systems, and that they may, and that those local agencies may spend taxpayer revenue from the state gas tax to plant and maintain trees and other landscaping that are within the street right-of-way. I think the same logic should apply for a local sales tax, transportation sales tax. tax.
Jeremy, does you have anything else? Does you have anything else?
No.
Madge, do you have anything?
Well, I'm just very mindful of the importance of going ahead with this project this year. When we get into winter and rains and it's dark, and if we haven't gotten our median strips improved, and if we haven't planted the trees, when are they going to get watered in instead of, you know, in the heat of summer? Or at the beginning of the year, when they're going to go through the whole summer? Anyway, it seems to me it's unfortunate that it's come in over our budgeted amount, but I think it's just going to be more expensive if we wait, and it's going to be a winter of problems. So I really think it's wise to go ahead with this. And I appreciate Jim Lance's comments about the appropriateness of including the landscaping in roadway improvements. It's integral to, especially Main Street. Thanks.
Greta, do you have any questions?
Well, I'm looking at the budget here, the nineteen-twenty budget, and we had set aside five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the Main Street Improvement Project. This is the project number five in the capital improvement plan. So can someone explain to me what that five hundred and sixty thousand was supposed to be spent on? And if not this, then what? And if this is coming in at five ninety versus five sixty, are we really going to quibble over thirty thousand dollars to do the thing that the previous council unanimously voted to do, which was to complete the Main Street project?
And this is Stephanie Gerbrandt Sierra. You are absolutely right. That is what the Main Street project was for.
Larry, do you have anything to?
Yeah, I would like to go along with what Madge said, and that I think that this is what we need to do, and I'm looking forward to it. I think it's going to be a real asset to our community.
Rod, did you want to say something? It looked like you were raising your hand.
Yeah, I would. Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes. So I'm not sure what the transportation five ninety was for. Typically, that's, historically, the half-cent sales tax has been reserved for pavement and sidewalk and storm drain improvements. To date, I mean, even when we were going through the Main Street corridor enhancement plan process, we had determined that half-cent sales tax was not appropriate for additional street improvements. One of my, I was going to wait for like public comment potentially of somebody that voted on and has been paying half-cent sales tax since two thousand and three. In two thousand and three, that's not what was sold to the people that voted on this. And it wasn't until two thousand and nine, I believe, that it was strongly debated at City Council whether or not half-cent sales tax could be even used for storm drain improvements. So I appreciate the idea that streets are an integral part, or excuse me, trees are an integral part of streets. In some senses, they also can prove to be detrimental. And while they may be allowed under the gas tax, the City of Willets didn't pass the gas tax back in two thousand and three. They passed the half-cent sales tax, which was floated as, we're going to fix the potholes and we're going to repair the pavement. So my only other, just from, I'm guided, two principles that guide me as I was a public servant for some time, and I worked for the City of Willets for a long time. One, what's in the best interest of the City of Willets? That's a guiding principle for me. And two, what is the best use of taxpayer dollars? So the reason, what's in the best interest of the City of Willets can be debated, but the reason that the bids came in really high from an engineering perspective, from a public not everybody, you're going to get bad prices. So both contractors have said you will get better prices if you bid this project, when public works projects are typically bid, which is late winter, you know, sometime in December, January, February, March, that's your window. So I think the cost savings aspect, aside from the amount that you would, that should be considered in this decision. The other issue is going through the Main Street corridor enhancement plan process, I do not recall us ever speculating on, one, demanding that these holes be placed in the concrete, because we recommended that they not, from the engineering, the engineering side. And so these landscape strips that are there now were requested by the city. I do not recall, and I do not see in the plan, anything to do with papers. It was vegetation and flowers and so on and so forth. So to make that jump from the plan was to do this, and that's why the previous city council set aside this money, I think is a stretch. And I don't recall that being what was, what the intent was, because the main issue we had with, the main issue we had with Caltrans was that they hadn't put enough money towards the project to do it, to do it to an acceptable standard. And that was related to pavement, and primarily pavement, sidewalks, and the level of improvement. So given all of those things, this does not seem like the right way to use half-cent sales tax regardless of the basis. It goes against precedent. It goes against the past, however many seventeen years of the use of this money. And in that time, I remember in two thousand and four, when I worked on Becca Road, and Becca Road already needs improvement since two thousand and four, and since that time, you have all of these other streets that have received no attention. McKinley, State Street, so on and so forth. And if you claim safety issues, then you have to look at the entire west side of town, where all of these landscape strips are, you have the same potential issue. So, sorry, that's my, I should feel.
Can I ask you a question? I got you there. If we were to wait to put this out to bid again, would it come in cheaper?
Mr. Mayor, this is Stephanie Gerbrandt Sierra. This is the city manager, and I would actually like to respond to some of the things that Rod has said before you ask him these questions, if I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, we could not put the project out to bid because we did not own the street. So we could not prepare our bids back until relinquishment. And frankly, it was dragging so long, that was one of the things that prevented us from doing it earlier. If we do wait till December to do a bid, keep in mind that there are no guarantees. There is never a guarantee with RFP. And so I wanted to put that out there, and that does extend the problems of Main Street as we're experiencing them now. And as I, you know, I did want to bring to your attention the potential liability issues of these street holes. I'm sorry, I have sat through two budget presentations, and as Councilmember Connie brought up, I firmly recall council describing in great detail that this money is to be set aside for beautification of Main Street. So we have some, lots of competing issues going on, and I think that if you bring up something, I wasn't here seventeen years ago, however, now that standards have changed and they evolve, and people recognize that things like trees actually assist in pavement management and safety of streets, and those are things that sort of adapt. And just like, we have a constitution that was brought forward a couple hundred years ago, and we adapt to that constitution, because things aren't the same ways they were two hundred years ago. And so similarly, seventeen years ago, there was an idea of pavement, but now we realize that there are other things that contribute to the health of pavement and to the health of our community, and that are legally permissible. So I just wanted to add that, that again, bids are not guaranteed, and if we do put this out to bid in December, we are delaying this project for at least a year.
Can I respond to that as well? One, I did reference the relinquishment date in the bid period. The second, what was the, I'm unaware, I mean, I guess there are some, there's some reports about pavement life, you know, the life, protection of pavement by the shade. What is that? Is that twenty years out when the trees are grown to a certain height, and there's some certain planning things? But I believe there's a potential to amend, and in the ordinance, there are some amendment, there's an amendment clause, but because the standards have changed, the interpretation of the, the interpretation of the ordinance changed. I don't recall exactly, I was trying to write down notes of everything you said there, but from a budget perspective, you know, that was two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and fifteen, we had extensive discussions with Caltrans about the budget for the project. And from a taxpayer dollars number, one of the things, the other guiding principles, twenty million dollars has been dumped into Main Street from the northern city limits to Highway twenty. So, I mean, from putting taxpayer dollars to work, it just seems questionable, to say the least.
You've got more experience with bidding. My question to you is just going to be, what is the likelihood that thirty thousand dollars that I'm not going to come in?
I think the number is like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because that was the estimate. I don't know what the thirty, I don't know what five sixty versus five ninety is, if it's out of the transportation fund. I'm not, I'm not clear on that. So.
This is Jeremy. I can, the five sixty, the five hundred and sixty thousand, just because everybody keeps bringing it up. We basically, I mean, this is like, when we presented this, I did say, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure what kind of prices we're going to get. So we overbudgeted pretty significantly on this. So that's, we just have five sixty in there, because even though that's quite a bit more than our estimate was, that's, you know, we thought we were, we thought we were well, but that's, that's why that's there, that's the one.
And I would like to clarify, this is Greta. I'm looking at the actual budget. The five sixty is three hundred thousand from the half-cent sales tax fund and two hundred and sixty thousand from the capital outlay D1 fund. And that's just five sixty out of the one point five million that was set aside by the previous council for Main Street improvements. So that's where I got that number. And I just want to respond to Rod. I think you made some really excellent points, and I am definitely sensitive to reasonable use of taxpayer funds. I think that is absolutely a guiding principle that all of us should be operating from. But I guess I take issue with the suggestion that dirt strips, the bark strips, were part of the city plan. I sat on the advisory committee meetings. I went to every single one of those five-day meetings at Rexall. And never did I hear anyone propose dirt strips on Main Street. We wanted trees. And when it was first unveiled by Caltrans, the year that they were going to start the Main Street improvements, they said, look at our beautiful plans, and we all went, what are those dirt strips? And they said, oh, that's what you asked for. And I recall Pete Swanton, Linda Max, me, Chris Harper, all scratching our heads, and tall man going, nobody ever asked for dirt strips. Where did those come from? And so the city at that time didn't stand up and say, no, Caltrans, we did not ask for dirt strips. They just said, okay, we'll take that. And now we're stuck with having to pay for covering those dirt strips up. And now people have tripped in them. A fire started in the strip in front of Savings Bank this summer that we witnessed. The bartender from Buster's running out with pitchers of water to put it out, because someone dumped a cigarette butt in the bark. And I just feel like this was never something, these dirt strips with bark, was never something that the community asked for or the city expected to have to deal with. And yet here we are, and we have them, and we have to do something about it. Yes, I understand that technically, we just took ownership of Main Street this summer, but it's been three years now since the bypass opened, and we have seen little change on what the character of Main Street looks like, other than some newly painted lines that have been very controversial in the community. It is time for us to do something substantive on Main Street, to show the community that we actually meant what we said, that we're going to follow through with the Main Street plan, and that we're going to offer up something to our community to make our Main Street attractive and friendly for pedestrians, something that we can be proud of, and that will bring, that will make people who come to our community understand that we care about our community. All right, I get a little emotional about this, because as a Main Street business center, I look at this thing every single day, so I apologize for getting a little emotional.
Oh, that's, sorry. I understand that completely, Greta, but I would also say that as the Public Works Director at the time, we knew that dirt strips were coming, because Caltrans wouldn't do, would not provide any betterment. They would not provide trees, because it was considered a betterment. We, and Dusty, you can speak to this too, because you were in the same meetings when they said, all we can do is, we're not going to do anything beyond providing you with a dirt strip. So that, I mean, I expected that completely, as the Public Works Director.
So at this point, Jeremy, I have a question for you. These trees, how big are they going to be? In the past, planted trees, and there were little tiny things that had.
Well, we specified in the grant, a certain size tree, I forget the exact caliper. We went sort of the next size up, which was slight on these trees. So we were trying to get slightly bigger trees, more mature trees, without getting something that was going to be, you know, huge.
So I guess my question is, these aren't going to be little saplings like we planted in the past, that the kids come around and kick? These would be?
I mean, yeah, they're not going to be fully mature trees. They're called the twenty-four inch box. It's a slightly older starter tree, but, you know, if you get much bigger, it gets really hard to move the trees around. The price goes way up.
These ones would?
You know, we want something manageable. But they are going to be really small.
Okay, but they would most likely survive compared to the little saplings we've gotten in the past?
I sure hope so. I mean, Cannon had some ideas for some protection that he can do, and, you know, part of what happened with the trees, I've talked about it before on Central Street, is, you know, right after we planted those, the drought hit, and we weren't able to water them. So, you know, we have, we have these set up to be watered, and, you know, we did a lot more to try to make sure they would be successful. And the grant stipulates that we had to, you know, do some pretty significant things to make them successful too. So, you know, we did our best, but they're definitely, they will be small trees that are planted.
This is Aaron Cannon from Public Works. I just wanted to back Jeremy up on a few things, and give people kind of an idea of what size tree he's thinking about. If you look at the trees at Snugger Park, there's two sizes that were planted there when we rehabbed that park. Some are bigger, and some are a little bit smaller. These trees will probably be of the smaller variety, so if that gives you some perspective on the size, then that's kind of what we're looking at. And as far as protecting, we do have rolled green cages at Public Works that were used in past projects. I don't know if we have quite enough to plant fifty. I could give you a better report on the inventory, you know, next time around. We need to do some touch-up. We can look nicer, we could paint them, we could maybe think about a culture. What we could do, we could do some things to protect the trees that we do plant, to make sure that they at least have a fighting chance, and that sure that they're, at least have a fighting chance, and that, like Jerry said, you know, kids aren't able to dig them, motorists aren't able to park on them, you know, there probably will be a few casualties that could be expected, when you plant 50 trees, there's probably gonna be a few that don't make it, so we'll do our best to keep them alive, but we're gonna have to take a chance on motorists and everything else that could happen as well.
Hi, this is, and this is Stephanie again.
Larry. Okay, so I'm gonna recognize Larry first.
I, I went to everyone of, excuse me, who is the one that is bringing up that, that budget, and that we said that it would be dirt strips, who was that person?
That was me, Larry, Rod.
Rob who?
Rod Wilburn.
I went to every one of those meetings and asked for water to go down that strip for five years, and then you tell me that we said it was okay to have a dirt strip there? Give me a break, that is wrong, I asked for water and we approved water, and Granite put the water in when they put the curb and gutter and sidewalk in, and nobody ever said we were gonna have just dirt there.
Right, right, sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, this point I'm gonna let Stephanie talk, because it's kind of our time. Hello, Stephanie, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I, as for the size of the trees, I, I, I just wanted to, um, reiterate that, you know, Granite bids these high, and, um, you can be assured that your staff is gonna be advocating for the, for them to really be true to their word in giving us really great trees, because they bid, you know, some significant amounts for trees, and both Jeremy and I were like, these are gonna be really nice trees, so, um, just, I just want you to rest assured that staff is gonna be on this project, and making sure that this, that this project is gonna look beautiful.
At this point, unless there's any other council questions, I'm gonna open it up, see if the public would like to comment. Okay, during that, then I'm gonna bring it back up, and, uh, if I have a motion. That was Macy, or?
Rose.
Hold on a sec, there was a Rose Macy that wants to speak.
Thank you, council members and mayor, um, I'm fairly new to the community, I've worked on other parks and recreation, um, departments and other towns, and I think trees are very important. My question is, um, I was looking at the budget and saw how much the pavers were, and it's too bad that, uh, they came in so high, and I know there were some estimates for doing it a different way, uh, because if we took out those numbers, we'd be right on budget, um, for it, but, um, anyways, I just wanted to throw that out and ask, you know, what the deal is and why the pavers are so expensive, and do we, did we ask for pavers, or is there a cheaper way to do that?
And, and I can ask, we, we actually did bid, uh, the, the RFP was for pavers.
Okay.
I can, I can, uh, talk about why the pavers are so expensive, um, because I did talk, this is Jeremy, sorry, um, I did talk to both bidders, and basically, you know, we don't have any contractors who specialize in installing pavers nearby, so we're paying per diem, uh, and travel expenses for people to lay pavers, um, it's just in will it, if we want pavers, we're going to have to pay more than, uh, other communities further south, um, it's, you know, I didn't really realize that when I estimated this, um, so partly that is, I, in my opinion, the, the reason why this bid is so high is the pavers, um, but, um, that's, that's the problem, just proximity to people who do the work.
And, and who, who would be doing the work for that, just offhand, is it somebody from Ukai?
Uh, the stub for Granite is near.
Lake County?
From Katati.
I mean, the expense.
That a Lumaq? Uh, Sonoma County.
Wow, that is a little distance.
Um, that's, yeah, and they're, they're much closer than most of the other contractors, so.
Macy, unless you have anything else, I'm gonna see if anybody else in the public. Larry, I think I heard you earlier wanting to make a motion.
I wanna, do the recommended.
The motion is to pass the recommended, um, condition?
Yes, it says the recommended action.
Thank you, sorry about that, um, if I have a second.
The granite construction for the amount 59276000, construction of downtown improvement project, project 2020-02, and authorize the city manager to execute, uh, contract and authorize the city to approve a contract change order up to 15% of the total contract amount.
Matt, you wanna speak?
Yep, um, I, I wanna second the motion, um, should I comment on it now, or not? Whoops, I can't hear you, Jerry.
I'll, I'll let you comment on it now, since you're the second.
Okay, um, I agree with a lot of the things and some of the reservations that have been brought up, and I, I think Caltrans should have been held to, you know, to, to completing the street at least up to safety standards, so we didn't have the darn strips that people are, are stumbling on, um, and I think that's, but it's water over the dam, it's too late to get that happening, and I really, um, I also agree that we've been very, very reluctant and not been using the sales tax, uh, transportation money for, for, you know, extras, but I think, um, the downside of not going ahead is just too great, and that this is an exception, um, to that rule that we, so as I said before, I think it's really important that we do it before winter, this, this win, this year, not wait till next year, um, and I think pavers are, although they're gonna be expensive, they're way more attractive than weeds, or, uh, wood chips, or dirt, or, or wilted flowers, uh, and nothing else was gonna, I mean, I think we really want to improve Main Street, and I think Greta's comments on this were really kind of influential for me to say, you know, we, I think we just have to bite the bullet and, uh, get this done, so that we have a, something to show for all this work we did on Main Street.
Hey, any further comments from the council, otherwise I'll, I'll for the vote, uh, Suprina, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm very concerned, uh, we're spending beyond our budget, uh, we're in a budget crisis right now, I think every decision we make is, is crucial in, in, uh, and it, and it sets, it shows what kind of leadership we have, we know that we have tough times now, we know we have tough times ahead, I know that we want this just as it is, we want to take it the way it is and run with it, but, uh, like Rod said, we put this out to bid during the most expensive time, I, I believe that there'd be some validity to the fact that we put it out later, we might get a lower bid, um, I think we should be within our budget, I don't feel that passing this, uh, is gonna do well for us in being transparent with the public and trust, I mean, we're already looking at a three quarter cent sales tax, and what is everybody asking me every time, are you sure that the sales tax is going to be used to, to make sure that our police department stays intact, and that our parks are gonna be available, and it's these types of things that make people nervous, because in their mind, whether it's legitimate or not that we use it on trees, this isn't the understanding of what we, what most people think the transportation tax is going to be spent on, um, if we have less in the budget, we should spend less, and then going back just quickly to the comment, I think that I heard Greta say that we were only talking about 30,000 more than what was in the budget, but as I understand it, we're talking about 90, hold on real quick, it was close to 100,000 dollars in the budget, let me get the exact, about 97,471,000, and it's my understanding that the reason that we have, the 560,000 that Greta was referring to, is because council made a previous decision to spend some of that 560,000 on an urban forestry project that I believe I opposed, and I just want some clarification, is that why we don't have the 560,000 that's allocated in the budget?
Um, no, um, I believe that we, it was just a different budgeting process, and we budgeted differently because we, um, it, we did not spend the money on, on other things, the urban forestry project, that was, that was our grant, I believe, and so we have not spent anything on an urban forestry project, that I am aware of.
So before we move forward, I would, I'd like some clarification, because Greta referenced a number that was in the budget, and I don't understand why, if the budget, Greta said, budget said 560, I don't have it in front of me, and yet, we're talking about this project being 590, but only having funds for 493, why don't we have all the funds available except 30,000?
This is, what, what was referred to was a, was a previous budget, not the current budget, so we, we have not carried the same, every budget is different.
So, if, this is Andrea Trincato, I, I'd like to speak about the budget, um, because the, the funds that, and I don't have the budget in front of me, but this is from recollection, the, um, the funds that we budgeted in the half cent sales tax were intended to be, and, and shown as being reimbursed from D1 funds, that the, the half cent sales tax would carry it until we received the reimbursement from D1.
But that was a previous budget, Andrea.
Yeah, I'm talking about this budget, um, and the previous budget may have had something, something similar.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, that I, I, I recall that a previous budget actually did have transportation funds, um, funding the Main Street Improvement Project, and I do recall that, because that was my first year here. Yeah, so we, but, yeah, and that budget was actually, but that was a previous budget, so it's hard to talk about it, because it is a previous budget.
This is Greta, may I say something? So, I'm looking at the 1920 budget for the fiscal year that just ended, and it says, um, $300,000 for the Main Street Improvement Project from 202, the half cent sales tax fund, it also calls for 260,000 from the 400 Fund Capital Outlay D1, there is a comment at the bottom of the capital improvement project that says, prior year budgeted 500,000, no work was completed in fiscal year 1819, anticipated work for 1920 includes installation of pavers, 260,000 dollars, there is, I mean, it's pretty clear to me what the money was intended for.
Yes, that 260,000 dollars was, um, intended to be reimbursed from D1 funding.
I, I, I'm sorry, that was not my, my understanding.
All right, so, um, sorry, can I have a, fast a clarification question on that?
That's cool.
Just, there's this back and forth, whether it's D1 or, or half cent sales tax, was there any half cent sales tax allocated for this project that went out to bid in July, for this most recent project, and then Jeremy and Andrea could answer that.
I'm sorry, this is Stephanie Gerbrandt Sierra, and I am going to answer that question, and I'm assuming that you're, you're speaking as a member of the public at this time, Rod, um, what we have in this report, when we initially went out to bid, we did not have half cent sales tax, um, allocated for this project, part of the motion that we are asking is that we are reallocating funds and allocating part of the half cent sales tax to fund approximately 90, uh, in, uh, approximately 95,000 dollars, that would be go to trees, that is a reallocation that was not in the original bid, when we originally allocated for the project, we are asking the council tonight to allocate those funds from the budget, because they were not originally budgeted from that fund, so this is a, this is a request for council to reallocate that money, just to clarify, and we have, and that's, and that's what we actually asked for, that's why we wanted the opinion from the city attorney to make sure that that was in that fund.
Thank you for clarifying, Stephanie, all right, we have a motion in a second, um, yeah, unless any council member has any other questions, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
You're muted, Ken.
My apologies, councilmember Connie? Rodriguez?
No, because I believe putting this out to bid gives us an opportunity to save money, and I don't believe it's a responsible use of the, uh, transportation tax, when we have potholes all over our city that money could be better spent on.
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
You know, I, I know it won't matter at this point, but, uh, I, it won't matter at this point, but I'm gonna vote no, even though I do see where Greta's coming from, and I'm just really torn, because I, I see where Suprina's talking, and, but, it's gonna pass, so, um, so, yeah, and I, I vote no.
Thank you.
It passes, thank you, all right, all right, now, thank you, everybody, and we are now, um, other departments, meeting development, do you have anything else?
No, I don't, Mayor, I'm not sure if, uh, our building inspector, David Bold, is online and, and wishes to share any information with, um, the council. Sounds like a no.
All right, and, um, administration?
Yes, I would like to, um, just thank, uh, Chief Allen for his support and hard work at the, at the police department, we really appreciate all he's done, and we are looking forward to working with, uh, Chief Alexis, it should be a great opportunity for all of us, and I'd also like to take this time to wish councilmember Strong a happy birthday, and also councilmember Connie, thank you.
Kathy?
Yes?
You sent out, uh, thank you very much, uh, you sent out something just a day or two ago about how our airport's being used for firefighting, and I know, uh, you know, it went out in an email thing, but maybe you should just mention that too.
Actually, Cannon is gonna talk to that, he's on the line, because he's been up there today and got lots more information.
Well, that's a good segue, Cannon, go ahead.
Hello, Mayor Gonzalez, councilmembers, um, trying not to take up too much time, it's been a long night, but, uh, Saturday, August 22nd, I was, uh, contacted by US Forest Service Liaison Officer, asking permission to stage hell attack crews at the airport, so, um, they're assigned to the August complex fire, that's the big plume of smoke, everybody. sees out there to the east. Heli-tac crews love our airport because it's at a higher altitude than most other options in the surrounding area, so they don't have to, like, climb elevation to commute to work. They can just shoot straight across the valley and do their business. But we love having the heli-tac crews because they pay us for the use of the land, for our land use agreements. Last one we had in place was, I think, two thousand and eighteen, so we'll be trying to renegotiate with them this year. The cost of everything has gone up, and they understand that. The liaison officer was more adamant that he would make sure we were adequately compensated for allowing them to use the airstrip. Um, we like having them around. I mean, having the helicopters and the heli-tac crews in our neighborhoods definitely benefit to everybody here. Um, when I checked in this morning, we had one heli-tac crew from Tahoe in, uh, occupancy and one Cobra, which I think they have night kick abilities, I think they can lift the fires at night as well. And I was told that there was a Chinook, which is a larger size aircraft on its way there probably today. So as this thing develops, as the incident evolves, we may be more of these crews showing up, and we're just trying to do everything we can to sort of support them. And, uh, we appreciate having them, like I said, in the area during these times. Um, we're leaving room also for a Skytrain, and that may ship later this week, that's one of the largest aircraft, but we can accommodate that crew. Um, they've got their mobile command center, which is, is pretty impressive. They have a couple of mobile boxes they deliver on apes, and they set up their own air traffic control, so they're essentially, uh, autonomous, they don't need a whole lot from us. We just provide the land and we charge them for the use. They do their own thing. We just try to stage them and try to keep the airfield open for other pilots. Um, according to CAT, we feel cells are, are still doing pretty well. And, uh, we basically just closed the taxiway, which is the run-up strip to get up to the airfield. And that allows us to, to position the aircraft accordingly and stage them in areas where they're not on the airfield, and they can still take off and land as they need to. So I'll give you guys more updates as things evolve. We're hoping that we've got things by the tail. We don't want to see it get any bigger over there, so we're just going to kind of continue to support them in their efforts. And that's really all I have. We'll keep you posted as things evolve.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anything else about our town? It's the airport.
Not a lot. I can do a little public work update, too. We did put some chips in the planer strips. That's not, we send it to be the final result, that's just a temporary solution to kind of get us by until we can flesh out the details. We didn't even have enough, I mean, I'm a little worried. Um, those are donated by Bruceburg on a yearly basis, and we use them in the parks and some of the, like, planer strips down on commercial streets. We had a couple scoops left, we brought some out, we tried to, we just put them in the downtown area on the trip and fall hazards and kind of by the banks and, you know, the restaurants. So we're just sort of working our way north with it. Get a little more, um, we'll continue. And that'll at least keep something in there and try to keep it looking somewhat presentable. We've been working on the weeds and stuff as we go through, but it's, it's tough this time of year, they hop up whether you dig them out or whether you cut them, there's stuff there. So until we get something final there, until we get some planner, uh, some pavers and stuff, it's going to look like that. So we might as well pull the trigger on it and get them up because it, something needs to happen.
I saw you guys out about, uh, downtown putting out those chips, and it's out really hot that day, and you guys were hustling. I just want to say, I was going to stop the comment, but I didn't want to get rear-ending on Main Street. So I-
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot going on in, in Willets now between the PG&E gas line projects and we're starting our slurry seal this coming week, so there's, there's a lot happening, so it's hard to get in and maneuver and crew in safely with everything that's going on. But, uh, we're, uh, we're able to move down the street pretty, pretty closely, and everybody seemed to appreciate just some sort of effort, you know, just something besides what's been going on in the last couple of weeks. When, when the chips started to recede, the original chips that Caltrans put in there, the weeds, it really took over. And once it became ours, we should feel like a sense of, uh, of obligation, pride, look a little bit in the meantime, so we can get something more permanent. So please bear with us, we're under construction.
All right, well, thanks again, and tell your crew, we really appreciate all of you.
I will, Mayor Gonzalez, thank you. Thank you.
Um, and then Karen, you on there, and do you have anything?
Sorry, yes, I am. I want to also reiterate, uh, my appreciation for all of the hard work, the dedication, the leadership, um, and the friendship that interim Greg Allen has provided. Um, uh, he's at that Bob Peralta level for me. Um, Bob Peralta was making wins for the city as we transitioned from one city manager to the another, um, which is exactly what Chief Allen did. Um, I think he has turned our police department around to where they are appreciated, they are approachable, um, they're happy, um, they're dedicated. Um, and it's been, it's, it's been a long time, uh, coming, and he, he's done an amazing job. Um, and I think that Alexis is gonna, uh, have some heavy, still, but I think that she's going to be just as great. Um, I think the community will love her, um, the, the department, um, is going to love her. We need a strong, independent female. Really, really looking forward to this, we're excited. And, um, you know, that's what, uh, community service is about. So both of you guys are, um, uh, it's been a pleasure to know you, and I'm really excited to see what our future has. That's it, it's me.
Unless I've missed anybody, I'm, I'm going to move on to, uh, and city council committee boards and agency reports. Start off with Suprina, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. We have the Mendocino Transit Authority meeting today, and as I told you all before, our executive director, Carla Meyer, has departed from MTA, and today we appointed, um, Jacob King, he lives here in Willets, um, and he's been working for MTA for several years. He is our new, uh, interim executive director. And then also, there's been a request from some local citizens, um, of Willets and a few from Fort Bragg, that we reinstitute the Route sixty-five bus. I had mentioned to you before that that bus wasn't running, um, during COVID because we were trying to, uh, decrease the number of people going between Fort Bragg, UHAI, and Willets. However, we've, uh, found that many people are hitchhiking, and we don't want that kind of situation either. So MTA has decided in collaboration with the officials in Fort Bragg that we're going to bring Route sixty-five back effective September fourteenth. And that's all I have for my committees and boards.
Yes, just that, um, Economic Development and Financing Corporation met on August thirteenth, and they're, they are starting a, um, committee to look at relationships with the cities, which will include Willets, and I think I'm going to be on that committee to make sure we're, um, providing the service that the cities expect from us. And we continue to approve some fairly important loans to, um, and, and deal with loans that are pretty difficult during this COVID pandemic, but, but generally, we're holding pretty steady. Um, and then the Solid Waste Management Authority, Mendocino Recycle, met, uh, last Thursday on the twentieth, and, uh, things are going along pretty smoothly there. We're affected by, uh, reduction of revenues, but our general manager is looking closely at that and trying to keep, um, keep, uh, keep us in balance, so we're, we'll keep looking at that closely as, as things proceed. But right now, it's not, um, there's not a dire emergency on that one. Those are my-
Thank you. Madge, uh, Greta, do you have anything?
Uh, the museum advisory, uh, board has still not met during COVID, um, although I did talk with the museum, uh, director just the other day, and she is anxious for us to get going again, so hopefully that will be, um, soon. And, um, the ethics ad hoc committee, um, met just before the last council meeting and hopes to bring something to the council, I think, for the, hopefully, the next meeting. Um, Madge and Karen and I are working on that.
Thank you. Larry, do you have anything?
Yes, uh, the Mendocino Council of Governments met on August seventeenth, and we had a review of the call boxes, and, um, there's, uh, some of them were putting them over to satellite instead of phone, and the main thing was we approved agreement with the state of California Department of Highway Patrol to answer the call boxes. That was Bill Plus. We also had, um, on the regular calendar, we had the acceptance of the final Mendocino County Assessment of Outreach and the Emergency Evacuation. And you really, all of you need to see the evacuation plans for Mendocino County. And I have a, a plan, and I will bring it into the city, and, and I think all the council people ought to look at it to see how, it, it took people a couple of years to come up with this, but they really did a really nice job, and I think that, that, uh, that everybody needs to be aware of it. Thank you. That, oh, and I want to thank Chief Allen for being in the interim, and he did a really good job, and, uh, I just can't thank him enough for all the work he did. Thank you.
All right. Um, I, LAPCA won't meet till next month, but, uh, I did sit in on the Measure B meeting today. Not sure if Larry had a chance to, because I was called away for a little bit on something else. He gave, uh, yes, they talked a little bit about the crisis residential facility, and it's moved on by the Board of Supervisors on August eighteenth, and talked about their CHFA, CHFA grant. They had a discussion regarding the Kemper Ad Hoc Committee suggestions, and there was a lively discussion over a five thousand dollar purchase of a gun locker for, like, when the police officers do training at their training. And that was kind of, kind of it. Highlights of it, so that's all I really have at the moment. But I have some things from League of Cities that, I'm not sure if all of you get them or not, but I was going to send them to Kathy so she can distribute them. Still some time, I guess they're, they're, they're key comments for their, I guess their League of Cities Annual Convention Meeting, et cetera, is going to be virtual this year in October. So, um, we didn't really budget for that, and I haven't really looked at the cost yet, but they've got some calls for support on bills that I will try and pass to Kathy to pass to you guys. And that's all I've got. And councilmember, some recommendations, if any of you have any. Madge? And Suprina?
Yeah, um, I know it's getting really late. However, um, I've had this on my mind for several weeks, that the, uh, this county's numbers on COVID are going up very, very rapidly. I looked today, not only are we at five, uh, six hundred and fifty-six cases now and sixteen deaths, but, uh, but if you look at the trajectory of it, um, up until early July, we were really low. You know, we kind of thought we were exceptional. Um, starting in July and now in August, our numbers are going up exponentially. And, um, so it occurs to me that although last meeting we adopted, um, the opportunity to have fines for people refusing to wear masks, uh, when they're supposed to, after being warned, of course, um, but I really would like us to reconsider, um, the ordinance that we considered and did not pass in May. Our situation is very different now than it was in May. And we also know that something like eighty percent of the cases of people that are carrying the, the virus don't even have symptoms. So it's extremely important that we keep our vigilance up and, and have precautions to avoid the spread of, of this virus. And it's a really nasty disease, um, as any doctor can tell you. So, uh, I, I would like to put that back on our agenda, um, and if necessary, I would like to see it both as an urgency measure, and if that doesn't get more votes, I'd like to see it as a regular ordinance, um, that we have a, an opportunity to issue citations for people that have already been warned and continue to not take precautions. Um, and as I said last time when we were considering this, I don't expect businesses to, um, to enforce a customer, but I do expect them to enforce their employees and to have adequate signage and to encourage at the door that customers who aren't wearing masks, please put your mask on. Uh, I think these are absolutely essential preventive measures to keep this exponential curve from getting even worse in the coming months. So, um, I would like to see if there's any support for putting, um, an urgency or a standard ordinance, um, on our next agenda.
Could I comment?
Go ahead.
Madge, I, for me, uh, you would get support there if I had some data that demonstrated that she's, that we have individuals or businesses in our community that are not following these rules and have contributed to the increased number of cases or spreading. So I would need some, some kind of foundation that proves that putting this, or, or, which what, so far what I've understood is the increased numbers are related specifically to, to family gatherings and such. So you would have my support if there was data to support it. I haven't seen that yet, so I, I can't agree with you just yet.
I imagine, and I, I was just going to add that, I know there's been, I guess I have my own questions regarding, uh, some delays in testing, so we may have already been at, and, and, and I guess that's, issue not only at the local level, but at the state level as far as how quickly the results are coming in. And so, um, yeah, I'm kind of, I'm kind of, uh, not on the fence about it per se, but I do, I would want some more information. So I would at least like to have staff look at this. Come back.
Do you want it on the agenda?
Um, I'm not ready for, for a, I guess, I, I would just want it to come back as informational and first, before I would consider it, um, some sort of ordinance. Kind of like the same as Suprina's saying, I, I kind of want some more facts, um, there. That's why I'm back. I, I do think that, uh, I guess I want some more facts, Willets-wise. And I know because of HIPAA and all that, it may be one that, uh, can't get all the facts we get, but whatever it takes to keep our businesses open and to let our schools open up and all this, I really, but I want some more facts. So I would, I came back, I wanted it as informational, just so that I could get some more information.
Madge, some facts that you could bring to the council is if somebody reached out to the county and found out how many violations, from the county standpoint, how many violations have there been here, where they, where they haven't been able to enforce, or that they wish that they had been able to, to enforce with, uh, greater strength. Because we have an ordinance, it's just, it's not a, a heavy penalty. And I know we probably shouldn't be talking too deeply about this, so I'll quiet on the issue for now.
Well, I could speak a little bit to what you just said. The, the county, uh, health department doesn't have any enforcement mechanism at all. It's up to the jurisdictions on that.
That's right. Yeah. I guess, I guess we're starting to discuss it, and so I think I would rather it come back as an informational. In fact, if we want to bring it back out, if we're bringing back information, we can actually chat about it.
I would be happy, this is, this is the city manager, I'd be happy to come back at the next council meeting and give you, um, some information along the lines that you were requesting. Um, I do attend a, um, uh, frequent meetings regarding what's happening on the-
I do attend a frequent meetings regarding what's happening. If it's different or relevant to councilmembers, I'd be happy to give a report at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Stephanie. All right. So Madge, do you, Sabrina, unless you have something else, I'm going to Greta. Actually, I have, go ahead, Sabrina, something else?
Yeah, I do. Just briefly, I also want to thank Chief Allen for what he's brought to our city and acknowledge him, his level of professionalism, his ethics, his leadership, and how he's worked hard with community partners. So I thank him very much for his time here. And then also welcoming Alexis Lealak. I had a nice conversation with her. She has an excellent reputation, appears to be a really good communicator, and values transparency and continued education, not just for her officers, which is really important, but also education to the community of what the Willets Police Department has to offer to the community. So I really appreciate that about her. And then I wanted to throw out that I have been receiving calls and questions in regards to Halloween planning. And so I think it would be advantageous of us as a board to discuss what we're supporting before the community starts bidding for some Halloween plans that may contradict what we believe is good for our community. So just keep that in mind. I haven't given any direction or supported anything. I'd like to know how this council feels about what we think is a safe way to celebrate the Halloween holiday in October. That's it for me.
Greta, do you have anything?
I was just wondering if staff could give a report sometime soon regarding the proposed pedestrian enhancements at the Highway 20 Blosser Lane intersection that were discussed at the MCAG meeting early, early in this year before all of this started. There was some discussion that Caltrans might even be moving on that as early as this summer or fall. So I would love to hear if that is indeed happening. If anyone else could back me up on that, so we could get that on the agenda, that would be great.
I would agree with that.
We would be happy to come back. I know that that's been a changing scenario, and so we can look that up and see if we can get that to you as soon as possible. Thank you.
Larry, do you have anything?
I have nothing more. Thank you very much.
I apologize. I actually, this is Stephanie Gerbrenz here. I have one additional item that I forgot to mention. I was called by Davy Tree Service just a couple days ago to look at some brush they were removing in the transmission line right of way, and they just wanted to make sure that was okay. And while I was looking at that brush, I did notice a very nice Medrone that had blue paint on it at the Hell Creek, at the park course. And I asked the person whether that, what that meant, and he said that was under the jurisdiction of a different tree company, but he said that that blue paint meant that it was slated for removal. And I expressed some surprise at that because that was not in, that was not within 20 feet of a transmission line. And so he had the person in charge of that call me, and I'm going to meet with him tomorrow to see, you know, what these plans are they have at that park, at the park course. And I'm meeting him at 9:00, and I wanted to invite up to two councilmembers to come meet with this person at 9:00 AM, because I am certainly not going to okay the downing of that Medrone. And he also agreed that it didn't really have to come down, so that, because it was really far away from any transmission line, and it was a majestic tree. So I did want to really take a close look at that. I know that Councilmember Stransky had expressed an interest in that, and I didn't know whether anyone else would like to come meet at 9:00 AM with this person as well.
Is there anybody else? When exactly would it be?
It's 9:00 AM at the park course at Hell Creek, right across from the, from the hospital parking lot.
9:00 AM tomorrow?
9:00 AM tomorrow.
Okay. I would not be available tomorrow. Any other council member wants to, sorry? Okay, I guess it's just Larry.
So Larry, we're meeting at the park course at, right across from the hospital parking lot, if that's okay with you, for 9:00 AM.
That's great. I'll be there.
All right. Any good in welfare? Madge?
Yes, I have two things. The first one is that I called up the Elections Department in the county and said, I thought it would be really good if we could have a ballot drop-off place here in Willets, the way they have in, on Low Gap Road in Ukiah, for people who want to vote by mail, they don't even have to put stamps on it. And he said, what a good idea, we're already doing it. So in October, when the ballots start getting mailed out, we will have a drop-off box right at City Hall, and people don't have to put stamps on them, and they're assured that it goes right to the elections. And I think Kathy ends up with a little extra work to guard those ballots and all that, but I'm really pleased about that. And the other good and welfare I just can't help but mention is that 100 years ago, on this date, August 26th, was the ratification, the certification of the 19th Amendment giving women the right to vote. And here we are in Willets with a female city manager and now a female police chief and three females on our city council, and we have a lot, just locally, but nationwide, women are really important to this country. So I'm, I just want a moment to celebrate that 100 years ago, that changed, and we're now part of the politics of this country.
You're here.
You're here.
Larry, did you have anything? For the welfare wise? If not, Mark Westerberg is waving his hand towards me.
Just a couple quick things. First of all, I admire your endurance, okay? I also really appreciate the fact that you guys have a really contrasting differences of opinions on things and are able to work through that without being disagreeable. So it really is a nice group of people on the council. You really all bring a different thing to the table. And just one more thing, Cannon O'Shea was a great hire. I've had like three interactions with him, and they've been just super. And so, and kudos, Madge, on the 100 years. That's really cool.
I'll just top it up with, I have no opinion since he was a young, young man, and so I guess that makes me an old, old man, so. And having a daughter, Madge, I really appreciate that there are no limits to what women can do and stick their mind to it. I think it's just a matter of time before we have a woman president, so. All right, with that, I guess I'll adjourn.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.